Council meeting. It's always nice to see our Boy Scouts in the audience. We thank you for joining us and wish you much luck on your merit badge. And thank our citizens for being in attendance as well. For the record, it is Tuesday, October 23rd. It's a few minutes after six. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Burnt?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Mayor DeVird?
Here.
And Councilmember Little Roberts is absent.
Thank you. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have Troop 62 here to lead us in the pledge. And so I'm going to turn this over to them and let us, let them lead us in the instructions.
Will the audience please rise? Stand space towards the American flag. Scout salute. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. You may be seated.
And I will have our clerk give you a City of Meridian pin following, well, not following the meeting. We won't make you stay the whole time. But thank you for that.
Just, I just wanted to say thank you for Troop 62. Both my boys now in college are former members of Troop 62 at the Methodist Church here downtown. So, welcome and thank you for coming.
Good job.
Item three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Larry Woodard with Ten Mile Christian Church. If you will all join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you for joining us, Larry.
Been a while and I, are we in a beard-growing exercise?
Yes. It's a season.
It's Movember.
You look good.
I'm trying, Larry.
You're trying. Well, let's bow. Our dear Heavenly Father, the City of Meridian thanks you for the blessings you have poured out on this community over the years. From a small farming center to now the second-largest city in Idaho, we thank you for the men and women who have led this community, especially during the past 15 years. I join with others in asking your blessing tonight on the City Council and our mayor. Together, they have done a remarkable job of leadership and the entire community has been so fortunate. I ask for your protection and for their health as they take time to lead this growing city. Guide our key city groups who keep us safe, the police and the fire department. The rise in opioid use is particularly troubling and I pray that you, we can keep our police safe as they daily confront this epidemic. With this growth, the need for schools grows also. And I see on the agenda tonight a discussion about a new school in the western edges of the city. I pray for collective wisdom and an early decision. Traffic is now a major issue and I pray that we elect leaders in the upcoming election who will address the highway and street issues. We know ACHD has worked well with these leaders and new widening of city streets is planned this next year. May this council be a force in moving the State Highway Commission forward on projects like widening Highway 26. Our city is an interesting mix of elderly retiring from California and young people going to school throughout this community. I thank you for the leadership of our mayor who brings to the youth of this community. They represent our future in the years to come. I pray for the city employees who daily carry out the duties required from, from the decisions made by this council. Permits, approvals, et cetera, are a daily requirement of many of these city employees. May they continue to exhibit the friendliness that is characteristic of Meridian. On behalf of the growing faith community in Meridian, I thank you for the hope in sometimes a very dark world where conflict and danger seems to grow daily. If our church is any example, expansion of our facility is required to handle the 700 to 800 youth now attending. May our faith community be a lasting example of goodness for the next generation of Meridian youth. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thanks, Larry.
You bet.
Thank you, Larry. It's always a good city update in our talk with God. Thank you. Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
There are no other, I don't believe there are any changes to the agenda. So I've moved that it be adopted as published.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes? Mr. Clerk? Any sign up under item five?
No signups, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton, you're looking smashing tonight.
There's one, one brief sign up, if I could, a little bit of privilege. You'll notice, I've just, I'm obligated to do this, wearing a Washington State shirt. We at times have fun up here on council, between the council and mayor, about sporting events. Sometimes council gets a little mouthy and perhaps talks about a game that might turn out the way it didn't, or didn't turn out the way it was supposed to. So, I have to wear this evening a Washington State shirt and-
And it looks awfully nice, doesn't it?
Remain seated. It's okay. Have to or get to? Get to. And for the record, we'll read the following. Let it be known, I might choke up. That on the 20th day of October in this year 2018, the Cougars from Washington State are recognized to be a better football team than the mighty Oregon Ducks. Present.
I accept.
I love it.
In my debt.
I love it.
Yeah, I actually gave him a really nice shirt. It's brand new. It could have been crimson, but I spared you. Oh, my gosh. Thank you for allowing us this privilege. Okay. Item six is a proclamation on Red Ribbon Week. And I'm going to go down to the podium and I would ask Dawn, if she's here this evening, to, to join me. Okay, we have a very active Mayor's, oh, I'm sorry, Meridian Anti-Drug Coalition. When it started, it was the Mayor's Anti-Drug Coalition and then we broke off and it's been a very active coalition. And Dawn has been actively engaged, also as part of our West Ada School District. So, thank you for being here. We also have a bust over here of Enrique Camarena, who really was the impetus behind Red Ribbon Week as a DEA agent. And Suzie, Suzie brought it in, Suzie Sturts, and she's been kind of carrying him around today for these proclamations. Thank you, Suzie, for bringing the bust here and, and letting us celebrate with him. That's great. So, here is our proclamation. Whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to our most vulnerable in society. Our children and a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas Red Ribbon Week began after the death of Drug Enforcement Administrative, Administration Special Agent Enrique Kiki Camarena, who in 1985 was murdered by drug traffickers he was investigating in Mexico. And promotes family and individual responsibilities for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without illegal drugs or the illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas it is the goal of the City of Meridian and the Meridian Anti-Drug Coalition, MADC, to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of Red Ribbon Week and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations and the such will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. And whereas millions of people celebrate Red Ribbon Week by wearing red ribbons or red or crimson scarves in honor of Kiki's sacrifice, participating in community anti-drug events and pledging to live drug-free lives. Therefore, I, Mayor Tammy DeVird, do hereby proclaim October 21st, or 21st through the 31st as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Meridian and encourage all citizens to support the efforts of MADC and participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. We are very fortunate to have a very strong Meridian Anti-Drug Coalition and it represents 12 different stakeholder groups in our community that collaborate on how we can use prevention, treatment, and law enforcement to combat the negative impacts that drug abuse and use have in our communities. I celebrate those efforts by the coalition. I thank you on behalf of the City Council and our law enforcement agencies that you stand beside us, you partner with us, and you're truly making a difference. So, thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Mayor DeVird. Thank you, City Council members. Truly thank you from the bottom of our hearts for helping West Ada with our drug prevention programs, which are amazing, super strong. But thank you for your ongoing support. We really appreciate it.
Okay, item number seven is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
There were no changes to the consent agenda as published, so I would move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and clerk to attend.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes must be carried. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So, we'll move into our action items. Our first item is a public hearing for H. 2018-0085. Before I open this public hearing, I'll just talk about our process. It is detailed in your agendas. We have staff provide the background information on the application that is being held for public hearing. The applicant then will get up and have an opportunity to present their application and answer any initial questions from council. At that point, we will have the public testimony aspect. We have three minutes and the timer is on the screen at the podium, so you'll be able to see the time that is remaining. And then the applicant has the final presentation to answer any questions that came up during public testimony or any questions from the City Council. City Council will then have an opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or any of those that testified to get any further clarification. I would note that there is a public record and council has had that opportunity to look at any minutes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, any written testimony and written comments from various agencies. So, with that, I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. First applications before you tonight are requests for a development agreement modification, annexation and zoning, and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 17.35 acres of land, its own in the county, located at the southeast corner of North Locust Grove and East Eustick Road at 3090 North Locust Grove Road. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is medium-density residential, which is three to eight units per acre. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the existing development agreement for Verato subdivision to include the subject property in the agreement. The first two phases of Verato exist to the east of this site, as shown on the map there. Annexation and zoning of 19.44 acres of land with an R-15 zoning district is requested. The proposed gross density of the development is 7.4 units per acre, consistent with the density desired in the medium-density residential future land use map designation. The applicant is requesting the R-15 district specifically for the three-foot-wide sideyard setbacks. A preliminary plat is proposed, as shown, consisting of 128 building lots, which has been reduced from 132 with the original application, and 18 common area lots on 17.35 acres of land in the proposed R-15 district. A revised preliminary plat has been submitted, as shown, since a commission hearing that depicts four fewer lots than originally proposed along the southern boundary of the subdivision. Subdivision is proposed to develop in two phases, starting at the east end of the property. Minimum property size of the proposed building lots is 3,081 square feet with an average lot size of 3,573 square feet. Access to the development is proposed from the east through Verato subdivision and from the south through Chamberlain Estates subdivision. No access is proposed via Eustick or Locust Grove roads. All streets within the development are proposed to be public, although reduced street sections 27 feet are proposed for LaFridge Avenue, Ring Neck Street, Stormy Drive, and Summerbrook Avenue. Basically, the loop road through the development here, which will only allow parking on one side of these streets, on the inner side of the loop. The UDC requires a minimum of 10% qualified open space and one side amenity to be provided. The applicant has submitted a revised qualified open space exhibit that matches the configuration of the revised plat. It does depict 11.2% qualified open space, which is 1.94 acres of land. Qualified open space consists of internal common area, a micro path, some parkways, and half the street buffers along adjacent arterial streets. A 6,500-square-foot small dog park with a seating area and a segment of the city's multi-use pathway system is proposed adjacent to the south slough at the southeast corner of the development as amenities. Additionally, the applicant has committed at the commission hearing to provide a shade structure within the common area as well. A mix of single-family detached and attached homes are proposed within the development. Single-level homes, mostly attached, are proposed along the north and west boundaries of the site, adjacent to Eustick and Locust Grove roads, and along the southern boundary adjacent to existing homes in Chamberlain Estates subdivision. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for future homes in this development. As shown, building materials consist of horizontal and vertical siding with stone and brick veneer accents. What you're looking at here is updated renderings, elevations for internal lots not adjacent to the street. These homes will not have eaves past the first four feet from the front of the home. And these are, like I said, the internal lots. These homes here are elevations for lots that abut a street on the side, like on a corner lot. The side elevation of the homes abutting the street will have eaves. All other elevations will not have eaves past the first four feet from the front of the home. However, there will be eaves on the rear of the structure. So, that's just referring to the sides of the structures. So, just wanted to point that out. The original elevations submitted with the application did show eaves all the way around. So, this is just a clarification of what's actually going to be constructed. Staff does have a few concerns with this development, and I'll go through those now. The number of narrow lots proposed has a significant impact on the amount of on-street parking available for guests due to the close proximity of the driveways. And here is just some photos from the first phases of Verato. As you can see here, because they're so garage-dominated and, and the driveways here, they don't, they just have a little tiny bit of landscaping in between most of the lots here. ACHD's staff report is recommending that the city ensure adequate parking is provided onsite as on-street parking is restricted. There is no onsite, i.e. off-street parking, proposed above the minimum for each lot. Past experience has shown that limited on-street parking has created problems with visitors parking in restricted areas that then block travel lanes needed for emergency access and in adjacent neighborhoods. Second, narrow lots limit the variation in housing types and limits the homes being constructed on lots from having varied stepbacks and building setbacks within the development to articulate and break up the front wall planes of structures visible from interior streets. All homes are constructed at the same setback with a garage-dominated design that diminishes community character. The applicant is requesting that this development be combined with the previous phases to construct much of the same housing types. Council should determine if more variation in lot sizes needed in this area to provide more housing diversity throughout the entire Verato development. Third, while the proposed open space meets and is slightly above the minimum required at 11.2%, it's not ideal as it's all located at the east end of the entrance to the development. As you can see here from the open space, at the commission hearing, the commission directed the applicant to revise the plat prior to the City Council meeting tonight to relocate the internal common area further to the west within blocks four or five and eliminate two building lots, resulting in 11% open space and a through common area to be more central and accessible to all residents. So, what that means is this area right here, where my pointer's at, shifting either to this block or this block here. The applicant did revise the plat slightly to increase the common area to just over 11% as requested by adding parkways within the landscape strips at the ends of blocks, and that would be in these areas here, but did not relocate the common area or eliminate lots as directed and requests council approval of the open space as proposed. The commission did recommend approval with some changes at the hearing, and I'll go through those in a bit. Summary of the commission hearing, Jim Conger, Conger Management Group, applicant's representative testified in favor, as did Will Dillmore. Michael Simpson and Megan Ezo testified in opposition. Chris Catherman and Paul Nielsen and Chuck Catherman commented on the application. Conger Management Group, the applicant's representative submitted written testimony in favor of the development. Key issues of discussion are as follows. Concern pertaining to the routing of the lateral through this site and possible flooding to downstream users. Need for an access via Locust Grove Road or Eustick Road to help disperse traffic. Concern that traffic volumes will be too high going through existing neighborhoods. Not enough transition in lot sizes along southern boundary of development. Desire for single-story homes to be constructed instead of two-story along the southern boundary of the development. And opinion that proposed density is too high. No personality or uniqueness to the proposed homes. Eaves that don't go all the way to the back. Homes too close together, i.e. the three-foot side setbacks are too narrow. Key issues of discussion by the commission. First, the applicant's request to pipe the south slough that crosses the southeast corner of the site. Since the commission hearing, a letter was received by the city from NMID stating that the south slough was renamed to the Finch lateral back in 1994. And as such, it's not considered to be a creek or a natural waterway that is required to be left open by the UDC. Therefore, staff is recommending that the applicant be able to tile that facility. Applicant's proposal for units to be owner-occupied, not rental units. Which units elevations will have eaves and which won't? Concept elevations all show eaves. No elevations were submitted for those without eaves. That was the original submittal. Concern there isn't sufficient parking provided on the site specifically for guests. Location of open space at the entry of the development as opposed to further to the west in a more central location within the development, as recommended by staff. And concern that an access via Eustick or Locust Grove Road is needed for the development so that traffic isn't being funneled through adjacent neighborhoods. ACHD is estimating 1,246 trips per day generated from this development. The commission, the commission did make a couple of changes to the staff recommendation. They modified condition 1.1C, excuse me, 1.1.1C to require single-level homes along the southern boundary of the development, adjacent to homes in Chamberlain Estates. You can see those right here. And secondly, the applicant should modify the proposed development plan as recommended by staff per condition number 1.1.6 prior to the City Council hearing. Outstanding issues for council tonight. First, staff deleted condition number 1.1.5, which required the south slough to be left open as a natural waterway in accord with NMID's letter, as I went over just a bit ago, which states the waterway is actually the Finch lateral, which is allowed to be piped, as requested by the applicant. Second, the applicant requests council approval to install the street buffer landscaping along Locust Grove and Eustick Roads for Phase Two with the second phase of development rather than with the first phase, as required in Development Agreement Provision Number 5.1E. And lastly, relocation of the internal common open space and reduction of two building lots resulting in a through common area, as recommended by the commission or as proposed by the applicant. So, council does need to make a determination on that. Written testimony has been received since the commission hearing from the following. Bill Casinelli, he is against this development for the following reasons. Front yards are almost entirely concrete. No eaves on homes. Design should include eaves all the way around the houses. Either allow an access via Locust Grove or Eustick or reduce density. Too much traffic on neighborhood streets. And all elevations are the same, i.e. cookie cutter design. Chuck and Christine Catherman, they are in support of the project and in favor of plan to build single-level homes adjacent to their property to the south in Chamberlain Estates. Evan and Annalyn Frazier, they are in favor of the development, and Kimberly Porter in favor. Staff will stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions for staff?
Sonia, Madam Mayor. Sonia, what was the last thing we needed to deliberate on as a council? I didn't quite catch that.
It's on your hearing outline, Councilmember Burnt. It's under outstanding issues for council. Item three. Relocation of the internal common open space and reduction of two building lots resulting in a through common area, as recommended by the commission or as proposed by the applicant. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything further from the council at this point? Okay. See applicant here. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers Will Dillmore, 1979, North Locust Grove, Meridian, 83646. I have some assistants up here to do the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Thanks for allowing me to present Verato West. This is in addition to the Verato community at Locust Grove near Eustick that you approved two years ago. I'm the onsite sales representative for Blackrock Homes. We just heard an interesting presentation of our housing project from staff. I'm here to present Verato from a different perspective because this is a different and you- unique housing style. We are not the typical Meridian subdivision of 8,000 square foot lots, 2,600 square foot homes, three-car garages for 425,000. Rather, we are a carefully planned out, well-designed, affordable housing neighborhood that bridges the gap between fourplex rentals and larger homes. We have two distinct housing product types that allows for a variety of demographics inside Verrato West. We have two-story homes, as shown here in the darker tan. We have single-level homes, as shown in the lighter tan. Single-level homes, some are attached while some stand alone. Here are actual examples of the homes we built in the Solterra neighborhood behind Louis' Restaurant off of Fairview Avenue just within the last three and a half years. These are actual photographs. All these homes are under 1,900 square feet with a price range of 240,000 to 290,000 in today's market. As I mentioned, I'm the onsite agent. New construction communities are what I specialize in. I have been an onsite agent with this builder for 18 years with this actual product type for the last four years. Verrato West will be our fourth neighborhood with this product style. This is a result of listening to our homebuyers and hearing what they want and what they need. We have seen firsthand the change in the Meridian demographics over the last four years for our buyers. We are seeing an ever-increasing demand for quality-built, nicely-appointed, smaller, affordable homes with low maintenance. Due to this fact, we have developed a community-wide yard maintenance program that is managed by the HOA. All yard maintenance is included in the HOA dues managed by the HOA. This ensures that all the yards look great all of the time. Our owners love not having to do yard work or store yard equipment in the garage. We do more than sell quality-built homes at prices that ordinary people can afford. We create livable communities for homeowners and their families. Meridian is our home, too. We want to see the community grow in a way that keeps what we love about Meridian intact for everyone. The builder was born in Meridian, raised in Meridian, graduated from Meridian High, and has office in Meridian for 22 years. My girls have been raised here in the valley, both graduated from Rocky Mountain High. Anyone that has visited our homes can easily see the care and craftsmanship that we do put into them. What is less visible is the care and craftsmanship that we put into creating the actual communities. As just one example, the builder prefers to sell to buyers who intend to occupy the homes as primary residence and not to investors. We constantly have investors wanting to purchase our affordable homes for rental properties. We prefer to sell to owner-occupied buyers, many of whom are first-time homebuyers who need extra help through the process. This focus is backed up by our CCNRs, which has some rental restrictions and does not allow for short-term rentals. This has had a really positive effect on our neighborhoods. At this time, we believe we actually have very little neighborhood opposition to Verrato West. We have worked with the adjacent neighbors to the south in Chamberlain Estates. We've agreed to build single-level homes along the south boundary line, as staff has noted, to make for a more cohesive transition from neighborhood to neighborhood. This resulted in us eliminating four lots. We agreed to this for two reasons. All their homes are single-level, which are, and more importantly, not only are their homes single-level, and ours will back up as being single-level, but more importantly, they're some of the most pleasant, respectful neighbors that we have worked with in 20 years of development. It's very refreshing for us in today's day and age, and we appreciate that. We have all the property agency approvals resolved other than a few staff opinions that differ from ours and our buyers. We comply with all of the code requirements and have all the preliminary approvals needed to bring this project to you tonight. This is nine months' worth of work. We have ACHD approval, Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works, Planning Department, Irrigation District, the city's comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, and Park Department. As staff has mentioned, we have actually only two issues left to resolve where staff's opinion and ours differ. Number one, as shown here on the screen, staff made a recommendation to relocate our passive entry open space to the west, as shown here in red. This doesn't make any sense for us. This is not an active park area. This is a passive open space providing for a visual focal point when you enter into the neighborhood from the east. It is not intended, nor has ever been intended, to be an active park area. This passive open space is no different than the buffers along Eustick and Locust Grove. It is visual open space to be enjoyed by everyone as they actually come into the neighborhood. Our simple request is that you allow us to keep the entry open space where we have it shown on the plat. Number two, plat has asked, staff has asked that we construct all the landscape buffers along Eustick and Locust Grove in the first phase of development. Instead, we are simply asking for the perimeter landscape to be done in phases, in the two phases that we're going. Eustick and Locust Grove are already fully improved with sidewalk connections in place, satisfying all safety concerns. We are simply asking and requesting that council remove this condition. In closing, Verrato West by itself exceeds all the code requirements for open space and amenities. We will be combining the HOA for Verrato West with the existing Verrato neighborhood to give our homeowners access to all the amenities. Our overall amenity package is quite extensive. Again, Verrato West on its own exceeds all the code requirements. Altogether, though, we will have over four acres of open space, which is 12.24% as shown on the overhead screen. Total landscape open space of over five acres. Two large park, neighborhood park areas. This will include fencing for child safety, play structures, climbing dome, swing sets, basketball court, big-wheel track, seating areas, active sports field suitable for soccer or lacrosse, shade structure, dog park, attractive plantings and boulders. And most importantly, we'll have created and we will continue to maintain over 2,000 lineal feet of regional pathway system through the neighborhood. Madam Mayor, council members, just one final thought. This housing style and neighborhood may not fit your personal needs or your personal demographics, but it may very likely meet the needs of someone in your family. Maybe your son or daughter who just recently graduated or just got married and is trying to stay in Meridian. Or your brother or sister who just recently got divorced, trying desperately to stay within the school district to give stability to their kids. Or your mom, recently widowed, having to downsize, looking for something that's more affordable, low-maintenance, easy to care for with nice amenities. I have personally worked with each of these demographics over the last four years. As a community, we're very proud of how well we have integrated into the Meridian City with our neighborhood. Thank you for your time, for allowing us to present Verrato West to you tonight. Again, we have only two requests. We request to leave the passive open space in the current location at the entry so everybody can enjoy it. Chamberlain homeowners, our homeowners as they come into the community, and allow for the landscape buffers along Eustick and Locust Grove to be constructed in two phases. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Kavanagh.
Can you maybe back a slide? I'd like to see kind of with your whole master plan where all these amenities that you're talking about fit within your entire development. So where are the parks? Where are the pathways? Where's the shelter? Where's the field?
Madam Mayor, council member Kavanagh. Again, on the overhead and following on the cursor here, this will be our regional pathway system. In Verrato, in our existing neighborhood, this pathway has already been created, and it will continue from east to west. So that'll be the 2,000 lineal feet of pathway system. We have the current park area within Verrato. That park area has the play structure. Sorry, let me go back to the play structure, the swing sets, the climbing dome. It also has the big-wheel track, which we put in concrete pathways throughout that area for the kids to be able to ride their bikes or scooters. It's fully fenced within that area, and that is visible as soon as you come in off of Eustick into Verrato neighborhood. Over to the west, encircled here in red where the cursor is, that's the new park area within Verrato West. That's where the dog park's going to end up being. By being able to now pipe the Finch lateral ditch, we now have more open space to be able to have practice areas, throwing areas, play areas, lacrosse practice, or soccer practice and whatnot, because there's enough space over there. We also have the passive open space. So the passive open space is going to have the benches and shade structure. So that'll be visible as you come into the neighborhood. As staff also mentioned, we have all of the landscape buffers as seen at the ends of each of the blocks, as well as along Eustick and Locust Grove. And then we also have in the existing neighborhood as well. So we have built berms all along Locust Grove and, or not Locust Grove yet, Eustick, and will continue all the way down Eustick, down Locust Grove with those berms as well, fully landscaped.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Kavanagh.
And then which part of this development, and where are the sidewalks going to be and where are they not going to be?
Madam Mayor, council member Kavanaugh. The sidewalks, in terms of just normal sidewalks?
Are they on both? I have the impression they were on both sides of the road.
Yes, we'll actually have sidewalks on both sides of the street all the way around. All of the interior lot blocks will all be sidewalked.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe something to keep in consideration here. When you're looking at these blocks, so this center one right here, it's about 300 feet from street to street, north to south. So it's not like we're 700, 800 feet. It's actually only about 300 feet. So in terms of walking distance within the neighborhood, getting to the park areas, it's actually all fairly close and easy to get to within a matter of a couple minutes.
What is the rear setback?
Madam Mayor, the rear setback, I'm not an expert on this, but I believe it's 15 feet is the minimum. But I don't know that I ever have any. It's whatever the R15 standard would be.
Twelve? Twelve feet?
Twelve feet, sorry.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylan.
I do have a couple of questions. The reason for no eaves on those homes, is that just purely a financial reason or is there setback?
Madam Mayor, council member Mylan. We knew that this was going to be a question. Eaves serve no functional purpose other than purely cosmetic, just like stone accents on the front of the homes. We put stone accents on the front of the homes, as you can see here in these pictures. So again, actual photographs in the Solterra neighborhood behind Louis' Restaurant. We put the stone accents on the front of the homes for the same reason. No one wants to pay extra for the stone accents to wrap around the homes, just like they don't want to pay extra to wrap the eaves around the homes. Our homes are value-engineered to put money where you can see it, noticed, and appreciated. We do install the eaves on the fronts and backs of all of the homes. We wrap them around the sides, as staff had mentioned, four feet around the sides, as you can see here in the photographs. I just don't ever have homeowners asking to add eaves to the side of the homes, and we've been doing this for four years. The photo staff has shown in their original photographs on the side. We'll own that. That was a mistake. It was the end of a block. We had two-story homes. Those were originally designed to be able to have eaves on them. We missed it. We have since submitted information to the staff that any homes abutting to a side street at the end of the blocks will have eaves on those side streets. And we just, we appreciate staff for pointing that out to us. That was a mistake over in Verrato on that one block.
Madam Mayor, so just I guess follow-up to clarify that. It is purely a financial reason for not putting the eaves on. Is that correct?
So when you do an R15 zoning for setbacks, it's not just a simple aspect of putting in a normal eave. There are going to be expensive eaves because they do have to meet fire-rated codes. So when we're looking at our expenses, yeah, that is a factor into it. When we're looking at trying to bring the best value to the market for what our homebuyers are looking for, the cost to offset it would literally be, as an example, taking the stone off the front of the homes. Or on the inside of the home, taking the granite or the quartz out of the kitchen and doing laminate. It's that expensive to be able to do it.
Madam Mayor. So there's not any protective thing that the eaves do to this, to that side of the home? I always felt like my eaves were somewhat protecting my home from weather, sun, wind, trees.
Madam Mayor, council member Mylan. Again, I do onsite sales. I'm not the expert here. All I know is, over four years, I've had hundreds of home inspections done, and I've never had it be an issue for the home inspections or for the buyers.
Madam Mayor, I have a different question. Different subject. So back to the, I was along the same line of councilman Kavanagh. I was thinking about the residents that live at the far end, the far west end. So I'm estimating, based on what you said, it's about a half a mile to the playground from the far end.
Madam Mayor, council member Mylan, it's actually half that distance. It's maybe at most a quarter mile. So the entrance to...
No yards?
From the intersection of Eustick and Locust Grove to the actual entrance to Verrato, which I don't know if we can go to a different overhead screen, the overall one that shows all the amenities, that'd be the best one. The other way. So from the intersection of Eustick and Locust Grove to the main entrance here, that's actually four-tenths of a mile. So to be within Verrato West is actually roughly 700 to 800 feet to be able to get from the furthest home to the west to the west edge of the park where the dog park would be or the other park area would be. Again, these aren't 8,000-square-foot home sites. The distance, as you can see here on the south of one block, is maybe approximately 220, 230 feet from street to street. So we have sidewalks throughout the whole neighborhood, and we're looking to kind of encourage that. This layout is very similar to what we did over at Solterra. We had the park, the main park for Solterra at the entrance. We did not have a passive open space or an active open space at the opposite end of that neighborhood. It's been there for three and a half years, and it is awesome.
Madam Mayor. Just, yes, what's the name of the street that you enter in on the current Volterra development?
When you come in off, sorry, madam mayor, council member Kavanagh. When you come in off of Eustick, that's actually Verrato Way.
Verrato Way. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions at this point? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, madam mayor. We have Chris Catherman would like to provide testimony.
Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Chris Catherman. I'm at 1838 East Camay, Meridian 83646.
Thank you.
We moved in about three years ago, and one of the reasons we bought our little house there on Camay was because I had cows behind us. We moved from an acre property in Boiseo to here, and I've thoroughly enjoyed it, but we both knew that there'd be some building behind us. And with working with Jim and Laren, they've really just listened to our concerns, and we appreciate that they're, and that the council or that the commission approved the single-story houses behind us. The whole subdivision as a whole is very nice. It represents, I think it'll help our neighborhood keep up the looks on it because this is such a nice neighborhood. It flows well. I think it's gonna, it's gonna be a good, a good subdivision, so they've done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also Chuck Catherman would like to provide testimony.
Good evening.
My name's Chuck Catherman. I'm at 1838 East Camay with Chris. And I have to agree with what she says. The neighborhood seems really nice. I like their, their open space park because every... I like their, their open space park, because every single person coming into that subdivision gets to see that on the way in. If that was moved off to the west, half the people wouldn't even get to see it as they went to their homes. And I agree with my wife that Jim and his crew has just been really good. They've, they've done everything that we've, we've wanted. So I, I support the subdivision.
Thank you for your testimony.
Paul Nielsen would like to provide testimony.
Paul Nielsen, 1812 East Camay Drive, Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you, Paul.
I moved into my home 20 years ago, and my property borders this new development. My backyard borders it. So for 20 years, I've had a pasture there, kind of got to like the cows and all that. But I realized Meridian's gonna grow. So if there's bare dirt, the house is gonna go there. I'm in support of the development since they decided to put the single family, or single-level homes bordering our property. Initial development, I was dead set against with two-story homes, because my opinion would have been, I'd look out my back windows and see a wall. But since they've decided to put the single-level homes bordering our property along Camay Drive, I really don't have any qualms about the development. Sure, I'd like to see a pasture stay there forever, but it's not gonna happen in Meridian. As far as the parking concerns, do you own the new development? In the evenings, I'll go on a walk and go out around Locust Grove, Eustick, and back through their new development. I see more cars parked in our sub-part of the development, in Chamberlain Estates, on the side roads, or the side of the roads, than I do in the new development in Verrato. So I don't know why that is, so I don't know that it would be a parking issue in the new development. Maybe it's because the lots are smaller and people realize they have to park in their driveways instead of out on the street in the development with our, our larger lots. So all in all, I'm, I'm okay with the development. I have nothing against it. They've been good to work with. They've listened to our concerns, and so I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
And Andrew, no last name given, but Andrew wanted to provide testimony.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Andrew Newland, and my address is 2166 East Ringneck, and that's in the Verrato subdivision there. I just wanted to hit on a couple of points there, kind of like Will said. The fact of the matter is, we need affordable housing for so many people out there. I'm also a Realtor, and I've sold multiple homes within that development as well. I've sold from maybe in a first-time home buyer to, you know, friends of mine, and then also to the elderly population as well that are downsizing, and it's worked out just incredibly well for everyone that I have sold a home into in there. So many of those people went to this neighborhood specifically because of lack of inventory of resale neighborhoods, homes out there. When you go look at a home that's priced around the same price as these, and if you were to go through them and look at them, you know, apple to apple, these homes are far superior, in my opinion, as far as quality of finishes go and everything like that as well. I've been extremely happy living in there, and I'm proud of the neighborhood and how well it's upkept and everything else about it. So I'm in support of it.
Thank you.
No one else indicated they wanted to provide testimony.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes? Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Richard Jeskey, and I live at 1886 North Chandra Avenue, Meridian 83646. I've lived at this address with my wife for the last almost two years. Moving from Anchorage, Alaska to Idaho has been an adventure, and an absolute, Meridian is just a beautiful, beautiful city. A real quick comment, I'm in favor of the Verrato West subdivision. The things that I've appreciated about Black Rock and Tahoe Homes has been small house, smaller yard, yet with green space. Comfortable floor plan with modern finishes. Appropriate planning and layout between single-story and two-story homes within the subdivision. Low maintenance. Ease in parking within the two-car garage with storage. Walkability. Attractive, mature landscaping. Some consideration for aging in place. Lever door handles, low threshold step-in showers, rocker light switches, mixed age play and sports pace, space with benches. We had looked at many different properties in September of 2016 and found Solterra to be one of the most attractive new homes, affordable homes, with small lots, small yards. I don't need to own a lawnmower anymore, nor do I need a snow blower, hopefully. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Brian Abbott. I live in Chamberlain Estates at 1855 East Shamir Drive. And we bought a Tahoe home in 1997. My concern is traffic flow. I guess, I see right now, if I want to go south or east from my subdivision, I have to make a right turn there at Cougar Creek to go east onto Eustick. If I want to go south, it's already pretty tough. You've got two crosswalks right there. You've got a school bus stop. You've got the three lanes. It does back up a bit. I'm thinking if you increase the traffic flow by this number of residents and cars, which you're already concerned about parking, that it's gonna make that left turn slow. So what people will do is, I guess, probably try and make another dangerous left on Eustick to go left again at Locust Grove to go to Fred Meyer, or cut through Chateau Meadows and come out at the light on, on Locust Grove, or to go through all the way down to Louis' and come out on North Hickory Way onto Fairview. My question for the developer is, why didn't you push for an egress onto Locust Grove further up? There may be ACHD questions about that, because you have that turn lane onto Eustick from Locust Grove going right there. But certainly with children and a school bus stop right there at Locust Grove and East Cougar Creek, rush hour traffic there is getting a little bit, you know, you're backing all the way up to Fred Meyer now. I guess my concern would be, why not put another egress onto Eustick? Or further up towards Eustick onto Locust Grove, rather than coming through Chamberlain Estates? But I know traffic is evolving in Meridian, and we are creative in how we get in and out too without lights. But I just, that's, that's gonna be a lot of traffic flow through our subdivision, especially on Cougar Creek. So just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr., um...
Almer. New.
The bearded guy?
I've got a question for you.
Um, sir.
If you don't mind. Having lived, you know, living right around there, do you anticipate when Locust Grove is eventually widened, that that would relieve a lot of your concern?
Oh, so it's gonna go to four lanes, is it?
I imagine it'll probably go to five.
Um...
Given that that's where the, how the intersection's set up.
I, I guess ideally it'd be nice to see a light halfway between Locust Grove and Eagle that would feed Summerfield and, but the question to me would, I would have is, there is, it seemed like ACHD did build like a cutout off of Locust Grove into the pasture there. And why didn't the street go there, I guess, would be the developer? But then again, you still got a ba, even harder left turn there, so I guess I don't have an answer. I'm just surprised that this would be approved with really no egress to go south, except to go through their own subdivision and make a difficult turn. You could put a no-left turn and make them go all the way down to Eagle, which would certainly irritate them and force them through Packer Estates, I guess. I'd like to suggest that wherever the great pathway is, it's like fire truck access that's at the northwest corner, just one lot down, that that would be made a street. But it is an aging community, you know, case in point. So there are fewer and fewer kids. Second point, if I may, would be, I see that, you know, there's this big plan for bike paths, and you do have the, the community pathway that's just gonna sort of end there. And it's kind of nice to have an uncovered canal, because, you know, you have the wildlife and that, to cover it over and have the pathway just end there, I'm not sure. My question is, is it the development, is it the city plan to finally push the bike path all the way down?
Oh, can you stand in front of the mic?
Is it the city's plan in their master plan to push the bike path through, that currently will truncate right there at that park in the southeast corner? Is that bike path gonna go all the way through along the canal to, let's say, to Meridian Road, or?
That is a great question that we'll ask the developer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, ma'am, yes.
My name is Paula Garay, and I live at 4076 East Goldstone Drive in Meridian, 83642. And I'm happy to say that I'm a proud Black Rock homeowner. It'll be three weeks tomorrow, so I am still in the throes of finding boxes, emptying boxes, but I'm bound and determined to park my car in the garage before the first snowfall. I am in support of Verrato West. Just a little backstory, I had a custom home built in Meridian Greens, and due to a divorce in 2015, we had a short sale. And there's this funny rule that you cannot apply for a loan within three years. So I had to rent for three years. I love Meridian. I have a private practice just a couple of blocks down, so my heart's in Meridian. I found two homes to rent, one in Tuscany Village for one year. The owner decided to put her home up for sale, so I had to move. And the second home was in Tuscany. That owner was, took a two-year assignment. He worked for Micron, and he was in Taiwan, so I was blessed to stay put for two years. But traversing Eagle Road, and also my, my sister and her husband had a Black Rock home out in Harris Ranch. I could not afford to live in Harris Ranch myself. And going down Eagle Road, one point I saw Tahoe, you know, affordable homes. I thought, you know, my eyes deceived me, because it was, again, listed for mid 200,000s. So I pulled off and went, and that's the first time I met Will. And since that time, I pledged to myself that I would, at some point, get a Black Rock home. And lo and behold, I mean, it took three years, but I'm finally in my, my new home. I agree with what's been said with the low maintenance, the zero scape. I prefer to spend my time doing something other than mowing a lawn. And I got to donate the lawn mower and the weed eater. So that, that is fine by me. With the custom home, you know, I thought, well, if I don't have a choice with my interior package, what is it gonna be? But I was pleasantly surprised, and to be quite honest, I wouldn't change a thing. I have stainless steel, I have granite, I have, you know, nice, big baseboards and, and crown molding. I, I really couldn't be happier. And in terms of neighborhood, we're still all moving in together, and I'm waiting for all of us in a row to, to be on our homes before I try and put together a, you know, get-together. But, oh, I'm out of time. I love my home, and I couldn't, I couldn't be happier, so thank you.
Thank you. And welcome to your new home. Anyone further have testimony they would like to provide? Would the applicant like to have any final remarks?
Madam Mayor, council members.
I'll just restate your name for the record.
Will Dilmour, 1979, North Locust Grove, Meridian 83646.
Thank you, Will.
Get our PowerPoint up and running here. Just addressing a couple of issues that we heard, parking, we heard about parking. We have a slide here that we want to show you, and I'll read this while we're doing that. As I mentioned before, we are not the typical housing lifestyle with three-car garages, 8,000 square foot lots. However, we still provide four parking spaces for every home, two in the garage, two in the driveway. In my four years being onsite, four different communities with this product type, this is seldom ever an issue. All that being said, as we can see here on the overhead screen, we have ample on-street parking, as shown here. So everywhere that is marked in red within Verrato West is additional on-street parking. So again, the homes on the south side, those are single levels. All the darker tan are two-story homes. The end caps are all landscaped, so they're, the sidewalks are detached, landscaping trees. All of that is additional parking over and above the requirements within the city codes. The other item, we heard about the pathway. I don't know the actual city's regional pathway plans overall, how, I understand it's pretty extensive. All I know is that as a development between Verrato and Verrato West, we will have built 2,000 lineal feet for the city, and will continue to maintain that. And that will continue, that will go adjoining here in our park area from Chamberlain West Community on that edge, all the way to the east, all the way through Verrato, which is already, already there, and continuing on to the, to the east. That being said, we really appreciate the opportunity to present Verrato West to you tonight. We look forward to your approval of our overall project with the following modifications. Number one, all we're asking is that here on the overhead, regarding the relocating of the interior open space, we are just asking that this recommendation be deleted for reasons I had mentioned earlier. This is a passive open space. It's for everyone to enjoy as they come into the neighborhood. It is not an active, or an active park area. Item number two here, constructing of all the arterial landscape buffers along Eustick and Locust Grove in the first phase, we're again, just simply asking to delete this recommendation. If the landscaping berms along Eustick and Locust Grove are required in the first phase, so if we have to do this in the first phase, there are extensive berms. We will need to bring in roughly 200 truckloads of dirt through the city streets across the city to be able to build those berms if we do it all in the first phase. If we're allowed to do it in two phases, we'll build the first, in the first phase, we'll build all the burming along Locust Grove that is on the east side of Locust Grove, sorry, Eustick, sorry, Eustick. On the east side of Eustick, we'll, we'll build all of that in the first phase. In the second phase, all of the road construction that we're doing within the second phase, all of that dirt, instead of being hauled off of site, we can keep that, and we can build the berms there. So it keeps us from having to bring in 200 truckloads of dirt roughly through the city, and then actually hauling that out, because we already have the berms built. So if we can do it just in the two... So if we can do it just in the two phases, it will end up being able to just use the improvements from the second phase to build those berms. Again, the biggest concern for us as a neighborhood, for you as a city, is the improvements of Eustick and Locust Grove. Those sidewalks are already in place. Everything is there. Safety concerns is all satisfied. All those sidewalks, all along Eustick and then south on Locust Grove are already in place. So we're just asking, just simply to delete that recommendation and allow us to just do it in two phases. It's not four, it's not five phases, it's not a long-term timeframe, it's just two phases. Thank you.
Hey, council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
A question for staff in the, in the, those occasions where we've done street buffer in phases, in this example, would it be a condition that's, that has the remainder of the street buffer along Locust Grove and Eustick done, you know, with the first building permit in phase two, for example, or what's the, the ultimate trigger that would require its installation?
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, councilman, it, it can just be done with the second phase.
So it could, Madam Mayor?
Once the final plat records.
It could be done at the end of the second phase? That's not a concern?
No, it, excuse me, let's back up. Prior to signature on the final plat, it either needs to be constructed or they need to submit surety, uh, for the cost of that construction.
And Madam Mayor, if there was a condition of approval that matched what they're asking for, that would be included, what you're describing?
If you wish to change it that way, yes, staff can change it. Right now, it's with the first phase.
Sure, thanks.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
How long until you reach the second phase after you start building, um, you know, starting construction?
Madam Mayor, council member, Mr. Burton, if we were to look at the current Verado West, or, I'm sorry, Verado subdivision, the first phase, our very first home was sold and occupied in January of this year.
Okay.
Um, we have the entire second phase completely built, um, already within less than twelve months, and we're ready to, for our approval and start putting in foundations in the second phase. So if Verado West and the current market conditions are anything similar as Verado immediately adjacent to it, that potentially is less than twelve months.
Madam Mayor, this may be a question for staff or a follow-up question for the applicant. I, I'm trying to picture my mind, is there, is there a sidewalk along Eustick of this proposed? So I know that there is on Locust Grove, but it, it, it wraps around down Eustick. There's five, there's sidewalk there.
Madam Mayor, council member Burton?
On your side, on your side of the?
Yes.
Of this development?
It is there.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So, you're a realtor, not just for this, right? Are you?
Correct.
Do you know the, the median price for per square foot for a new home in Meridian?
Madam Mayor, council member Mylum, I've been doing this for twenty-five years. The, from my understanding, with household income, I'll start there, based off of Chamber Commerce's information, average household is roughly around sixty-three thousand for household in Meridian. If we were to look at the price per square foot for new construction, similar to what we're doing, we're somewhere around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty dollars a square foot, all-in, everything, finished, landscape, fence, house, the lot, everything for our two-story homes. Our single level, uh, attached homes are gonna be clo, closer to a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-five dollars a square foot. If you were to take an example as in Paramount or Bainbridge, you're gonna be also running somewhere probably for those twenty-six hundred square foot homes, you're looking at a hundred and eighty dollars a square foot or more. We're seeing now on a regular basis, two hundred dollars per square foot for homes throughout, new construction throughout the community. We are doing everything we can to be able to keep our homes affordable. Our overall price range in Verado, Verado West is planned, is somewhere in the two-hundred forty thousand to two-hundred ninety thousand. It is very difficult to even get that low. Existing homes, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years old, to go and look for a fifteen-hundred, sixteen-hundred square foot home here in Meridian, two-hundred forty, two-hundred fifty thousand dollars for a twenty-five-year-old home, two-car garage, everything has to be updated, remodeled, twenty-year-old furnace, very, very difficult. And so that's why we are working so hard to be able to have affordable housing that, for us, and the feedback that we have from our homebuyers over the last few years, to be able to do the low-maintenance yards, the landscaping maintained by the HOA, maintain the integrity of the community, I mean, that's been really, really well-received, and this is our fourth neighborhood of doing it.
Mr. Burton.
Um, talk to me about, one, one of the concerns that the staff had was the variation in, in, in the homes. It seems like, looking at, and I realize to the east, there is, obviously you have a subdivision there and you're doing the same subdivision here in the west, but my concern is the variation of, of the home, all of them have the same setbacks, they're identical and, you know, and I, I have a concern with how, just the look and the feel of, of the subdivision, is there a way to, to fix that so it's, it's more inviting, to give it a little bit more, may, maybe, maybe it's the eaves that we're ta, I'm not sure, but it's, it, it just seems, it seems cookie-cutter.
Madam Mayor, council member Burton, we pulled up another picture here. This again is within the Solterra neighborhood, and I know we refer back to Solterra just because it's now three, three and a half years into its maturity. You can easily find pictures within all neighborhoods that are not attractive. Overall, with the maturity of the trees, with the landscaping the way we're doing, we have, doing the shrubs and the trees in between the driveways, we're looking to get height and vertical elevation and color to break everything up as we're doing that. You can see here on the lower picture, the single level attached with the grass and the landscape, and how there's multiple elevations. We have five different floor plans, we have three different elevations on each one, we have, I don't even know how many color packages that we have. The elevation changes, change from hip roofs to gable roofs and give different variations with it as well. Um, the single levels, we do the same thing, hip roofs, gable roofs, break up, different stone, different heights in the stone, not just a wainscote, but then a full-height stone on the garages, or a three-quarter height on the garages, breaking all this up. It is a true balancing act to be able to create something that is low-maintenance, easy to maintain, really, really nice. The finishes in the, in these homes, as you heard some of the homeowners speak to, are really nice, and that's our standard level of finishes, stone countertops, custom cabinets, stainless steel appliances, hand-textured fixtures. In order to be able to do that and to see and hold the value for where the homeowners and homebuyers appreciate, being able to have low maintenance and the elevations the way we do, put the money into the eaves in the front, in the back, rather than on the side, those are where the values are for our homebuyers. We continue to ask our homebuyers what's important to them, and that's, this is where we're at. And, um, we really think there's plenty of variation within the neighborhoods. As you can see here, this is an actual picture that we took. This isn't even three weeks ago.
Madam Mayor, just a, maybe just a comment, I remember my first home that I bought. It didn't have granite countertops, it didn't have, uh...
Maintenance.
Quartz anywhere. Um, I could go on and on and on, I, about amenities that, 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 that the so-called affordable homes have. Um, to me, when you're talking about affordable homes at a hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot, that's crazy, and you know, I'm not, this, this is, this is just me thinking, I'm, I'm, this is a comment, this is not a question, but, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm wondering if there's ways in which we can just spice this up a little bit, have it look more, less dense, and, you know, attract first-time homebuyers that may or may not be concerned with granite countertops and quartz countertops and engineered hardwood floors throughout, you know, updated carpet. Um, I know I certainly didn't have that when I bought my first house.
Madam Mayor, council member Burton, I definitely appreciate the comments, I really do. When we are looking at getting feedback from buyers, we don't look at it from a price per square foot, we look at it as what is the sale price for these homes? And again, two-hundred forty to two-hundred ninety thousand, as crazy as it sounds here in the city of Meridian, that is first-time homebuyer. I have multiple first-time homebuyers that are purchasing, they're out of college, they're in the workforce, and they're purchasing at this price range. We have demographics that isn't just the first-time homebuyer. We have demographics that is the single professional, recently graduated, and I, I can picture them in my head right now in Verado, I have every one of these. I have the divorced mom who moved over from across the street on Eustick with a teenage daughter who is trying everything they can to be able to stay within the school district. They had the granite, they wanted to get, if we don't do stone countertops, we will not sell homes. Even if the price is reduced, I mean, we can't even reduce it enough to be able to sell that home. Our competition does that, we need to do that. Again, we go back to value engineering. We are not doing plush, you know, thirty-five, fifty-dollar per-square-yard carpet. It's good carpet, it's eight-pound pad, the cabinets, they're custom-built, but they're not the auto-poles, they're not the auto-close. We put it in the hinges, we put it in the construction. The appliances, you know, they're really nice stainless steel appliances, but they're not Bosch, you know, they're not five thousand dollars for the appliance package. It is all within reason, we're looking at every single dollar item. And again, going back to demographics, same neighborhood, I've got the parents that relocated here from Texas that are in their eighties to be closer to family, that are in our single level attached. Um, I have a, uh, retired empty nester couple that just bought one of our two-story homes that came here from Sun Valley. And you think they came here from Sun Valley, they got a lot of money when they sold their home? Nope, they're on a budget just like the rest of us. So I appreciate the comments, and I definitely appreciate, you know, looking to be able to, uh, provide as much differential and integrity as we can within the homes. We really do feel that we have done that, and again, this is not an unusual picture. The picture that staff has up is in Verado, the landscaping is literally one season, but it's the same landscape package that we have that you see here in Solterra with three years under its belt.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Uh, and you've said it twice, so I apologize, what did you say the, the starting price of the homes in here are gonna be?
Madam Mayor, council member Palmer, starting price right now is right around two-hundred forty thousand. We're doing our best for the single-level homes that are gonna be, uh, backing up to Eustick in our second phase of Verado, to be right around two-thirty-nine-nine. That is where we're shooting to be on our price, and we're trying to keep those, um, as the best value as we can.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Appreciate the extensive testimony about the internal components, you're clearly passionate about what you do and the product that you sell, so appreciate the added detail. Uh, staff and planning and zoning both voice some significant cer, concerns about, uh, the lot width, um, and I think that's probably what speaks to their desire to relocate this passive park to where it's more accessible to many of the customers that you anticipate moving into your homes. You've, uh, expressed a desire to keep it where it is, so, so help us get to a win for everybody. Where the, the, your residents that move in get, uh, access to open space without having to walk all the way through the neighborhood, you get an attractive amenity that will make your product more desirable to a customer base. How do we get to a place that everybody wins?
Madam Mayor, council member Kavner, when looking at the overall plat, again, I, looking at, trying to be able to have a feel of a neighborhood, when you have an entry-open space, a passive-open space, when you come in to your neighborhood, we find the feedback from our homebuyers is critical on that. I know in the neighborhood I currently live in, it's twenty years old here in the Meridian area, we have those open spaces when you come into the entrance and it's really, really appreciated. So from that standpoint, that's why we really wanna keep that passive-open space where it is. If this was a half a mile distance from one end to the next on this community, this is right about, in our experience again, the same size as our Solterra neighborhood, almost to the acre, almost to the unit size, uh, distance from east to west, and we had located that park area at the entrance for everybody to enjoy coming in. Never once have we had any feedback from a homeowner that is saying, we don't wanna walk five hundred feet, we don't wanna walk a minute to be able to get to the park area. Um, we have done extensive parkway strips at each end of the block, so again, those are separated sidewalks, um, with the trees, and, um, the distance from north to south is, again, is only about three hundred feet. We find that congregating, open space, being able to keep it short distances in walking, we have all the sidewalks in place, being able to encourage, encourage people to be able to gather all up in this area here, that's the information we get from our homeowners in terms of what they're looking for. Um, if we were, again, a half a mile distance, I would totally understand putting that distance in there, but we're talking roughly seven hundred feet from east to west.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner, just hold on for a sec. Are these buildable lots? Would you be able to build there, or, or are you designing a park there because there's something with the south slough that is preventing that?
Madam Mayor, that is a great question, and no, uh, they're actually buildable lots. Um, that is actually what staff had recommended that we do, is to build two homes there rather than the passive, uh, park space. When, eh, when you drive into the neighborhood, you will see just the homes in front of you, rather than green space, a shade structure, a bench, you will literally just see a couple of driveways with the landscape in between and the homes, but yes, those are definitely buildable lots.
No, the, the one on the south?
Uh, so, sorry, on the south side, that is not buildable area on the south side. That is where the Finch lateral ditch, not the slough, but the Finch lateral ditch is, that we would be looking to pipe, that staff has already agreed to allow us to do that. So no, those are not buildable lots down in that area.
Okay. Mr. Kavner, sorry.
Ma, Madam Mayor, well, you asked one of my questions, so I, I appreciate that. And I guess just, just a comment, I, I appreciate the testimony, but, you know, when you first look at this and you kinda read your narrative, you start to think, oh, this is a great, you know, age-restricted community, but that's not what we're hearing from you, you're saying, no, this is for first-time homebuyers and people who want their kids to be able to stay in the West Ada. But the product doesn't have yards, front yards, your two-story product doesn't have front yards, and what you're saying is that the logical solution is to build a passive open space for kids to be able to access that's on the far end of your development. And, and I, you don't need to respond, but I, I just think that it's a, it's a challenge for us, because I appreciate what you hear, but we as a city council hear from our citizens the desire and demand for accessible open space. And you've got a very beautiful amenity that your customers will see when they're coming to look at it, but it is so far away from all the, the residents to be able to access, and I think there's a, there's a solution that's there. I wanted to give you an opportunity to see if, if you felt there was one, if, if not, that's okay, um, but I, I think that you really need to take a hard look about where you're using this open space so that your residents can actually appreciate it and enjoy it.
Are there any other questions from council? Any final comments?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Staff, anything further? Mr. Burton.
I move to close the public hearing on item H two thousand eighteen zero zero eight five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. All ayes, motion carried. Mr. Palmer.
So I sent CJ a link, just so it could be included in the record, because I looked something up. I know Zillow isn't science, but I just was curious to just try to get a snapshot of what might be available out there in Meridian. And so I just put in max price, 250,000. Show me what there is in Meridian. And it came up with 34 results. A pretty big chunk of those were homes that were either up for auction, or they were just bare land, different issues. So it looked like there was about 20 houses available in Meridian with a max price of 250,000. The newest one out of those was built in 2001. So yeah, it's not the starter home that even I first had three years ago. I mean, I sold that thing for nearly 200 grand, and it was built in '84 and needed a lot of work. So, I mean, things have changed a lot in a hurry. So to be able to have a brand-new house for 240,000 in reality is kind of impressive that that's even possible. One of, you know, my biggest complaints in my neighborhood, I live in a Cory Barton neighborhood with ample street parking, unfortunately, nobody bothers to use their garage with all their Christmas and Halloween decorations instead stored in there because there's all kinds of places to park on the street, where there's balls constantly coming out in the street, kids running into the street, and I have to creep through my subdivision because I can't even see the sidewalk. There are so many cars on the road. So I, I love that this is what's being presented to us, and I pray that we have more developers bring driveways closer together or skinnier streets where parking's only on one side or no sides if possible to force people to have to use their own space more wisely, park in the garage, park in the driveway, get them off the street. The open space positioning, I wish in, you know, in my neighborhood that we walked, drove into that, but instead you drive into people's driveways. I think that's kind of a clever use of space, which is they've done in the other part of their subdivision. So to me, the two issues here aren't issues for me. I think that they're advantages. We have a city park across Eustick given, but in pretty close proximity to this neighborhood. Hopefully, there, we do have a future pathway that connects through the rest of that canal area. I think it's wise thinking to go ahead and put that in now rather than us try to have to work with the HOA later to build one. So I, I love what's being presented, and I hope that we pass it. So with that, I move that we do approve H. 2018-0085, including the, to keep the phased approach to the landscaping plan, given that the sidewalk especially is already in place, and to accept the position of the open space as the applicant's presented it.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay. Any discussion from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
In addition to, to what's part of the motion, I think it would, it makes sense, and maybe it's implied in the motion, that that 1.1.5, the deletion of the tiling for the Finch lateral, or excuse me, for it to be left open is removed. It can be tiled. That was one of the outstanding issues. So 1.1.5 would be deleted.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, I had that originally written down to mention, but then I saw staff deleted is what was on the report, so I ignored it. But yeah, that was my intention.
Okay. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I don't, I, I think this is some of the diversity of housing product that, that the community needs. I think the applicant's done a good job in presenting, presenting this new product in this space. I think it fits. A couple of things that, that I would ask to add and would hope would become part of it. One, I think eaves all the way around the house are important. I think Genesis hit a point that, I mean, they, they throw water away from the house. They solve problems down the road for homeowners, and we've always had it, quite frankly, in almost every situation. So I think it's just got to be part of, the elevations would be modified, or the approval would be modified to require that around each and every home. And the other addition, which perhaps would go into the development agreement that the applicant said, which I thought was an important part of this development's success, is that the CCNRs, recorded CCNRs be provided that reflect the HOA will be responsible for all the landscaping and maintenance. There's probably, there's not a condition of approval that has that, but it could probably be created and included in the DA to require that. The applicant suggested it, and I think it's light of these lot sizes and the front yard and parking issues. That was a good solution by the applicant, and let's memorialize it in a condition as well. So with those, I guess, three additions to the motion, I'd be supportive of it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I, I agree with Mr. Burton. Just, just one thought, and I don't know if there's any creativity that we can talk about in regard to those, the passive-open space as you drive into the subdivision. As a homeowner, I, I don't know if I would want, you know, at nighttime, having someone driving in the neighborhood and having, you know, bright light shine on my two lots. You know, I, I get that that's not the ideal spot for passive or non-passive open space. I've been trying to think of different ways that we could, other than taking out lots, create some more open space on the westerly portion of the subdivision. But I guess I'm not opposed to, to where this passive open space is just, just for the, the look of it, but also I think that, you know, I don't know if I'd want, you know, headlights pointed at my house in the nighttime while people were driving into the subdivision. So I somewhat makes, that somewhat makes sense to me.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Palmer, I would ask you if you agree to add those suggestions from Mr. Burton to your motion.
I'm, if I could trade my eaves for a granite countertop, I would in a second. So I, I want to let my motion sit as it is. If you want to withdraw your second, that's fine. But, but the other, I mean, with the exception of the other two, I mean, leaving the eaves out, but your CCNR comments and the, you know, the staff deletion of the condition, absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Burton.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, the, the inclusion of the eaves isn't just quite, for the sake of it, it, they serve a function and do protect the homeowner and the homeowner's property. It wicks water away from the side of the house. It avoids water intrusion. I've seen those claims happen a number of times. They happen well after a house is sold and, and they're, they're unsolvable at that point because you're not going to redo your roofline and add eaves. It's one of the reasons why we see them in all the way around the house in 99% of the homes and elevations that seem to come before us. So it seemed clearly to be appropriate in this case, and probably in all other cases, at least in my perspective, that it's an appropriate condition to include. It's not just an issue, I don't believe.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And maybe Sonia, why don't we have eaves as a building code requirement?
Madam Mayor, Councilman, I, I have no idea. I, I'm not a expert on building code. I do know that eaves help keep moisture and, and water away from the siding, the windows, and the foundation.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I imagine there's lots of things that, that you could do to improve the, the safety in any which way of your home. All those things come at a cost. To me, there's a reason that the city doesn't require them in code, that, that what they're presenting is, is acceptable to code, and I'm willing to, to trust that the code handles the situation as opposed to spending, you know, somebody else's money.
Okay, is there any further comment?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I'm, I agree about the eaves. I would not build my house without eaves, and, and I appreciate affordable housing. That is definitely something we need. My guess is by the time these are actually built, they're going to be 300 to 340,000 dollars. And I don't know what's affordable anymore. My first house was 40,000 dollars. That tells how old I am. Anyway, I'm still having a problem with the open space, not being so, not having any open space with no yards whatsoever. We have children way over here, and they have to walk. It started out 300 feet in between each block, and then it got to 240, and then it got to 700 feet total. So I don't know what the number really is, but it's too far. And so I, planning and zoning asked them to move it, and they didn't. And I understand why they want the aesthetics of, of that there, but I don't know if there's a solution of making it a little bit smaller and then taking out two lots somewhere else. I just, it's too far with nothing, considering that these homes have zero lots, zero yards, and you're going to have children playing there. And they just play in the street. I'm just not comfortable with that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I know we got a motion and a second, and I just, a couple other comments before we vote. I tend to agree with Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Mylum. I think that's what speaks to our, our council. We've, we've got some reservations, but we all are trying to work through them with the developer to try and get to the yes for, for all of them. I think there's some very easy solutions that can, can come to get this project to be a yes for me. I'm concerned about the eaves. My concern about the, the aesthetics. I tend to agree very much so with staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission about the open space. Again, I think these are all things that we can easily solve, but as they are not included in this motion before us, I will not be supportive of it.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Okay. The motion fails.
We have a new motion?
Yes, please.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Since we were closed, there was one addition that, that I thought was appropriate with the eaves. So I would make a motion to approve H. 2018-0023 to include the, the eaves around each property and all of the, well, I'll just cite them. The street buffer is proposed by the applicant. Open space remains where located. 1.1.5 is deleted, and that the CCNRs, recorded CCNRs are provided that reflects the HOA responsible for all landscape maintenance for each of the parcels.
May I have a motion and a second? We've heard comments. Any further comment? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
You guys have it?
Madam Mayor, may I clarify the motion, please? Councilman Burton, four-sided eaves?
Yes.
Do you have a minimum width of those eaves? From what I understand from building code, they can extend one foot into the setback area with a three-foot setback with fire-rated eaves. Just, you probably should specify if, if it's one foot you're looking for or less.
Madam Mayor, I, I don't know if I could.
You may end up with three-inch eaves.
No, less than a foot, if that's helpful.
Yes. Minimum one-foot eaves?
Yes.
Okay. And I believe I heard you say relocation of the open space?
Is not required.
Is not required. Thank you. Okay.
Correct. And, and Madam Mayor, to the, if I could, the, the street buffer, when I had questioned during the open meeting about the, kind of a modified condition of approval that would reflect how the applicant's request would be placed as a, as a condition to allow the street buffer to be installed.
Was that regarding the berm on Locust Grove in the first phase, phase and the second phase have the berm?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And I think there wasn't a condition of approval that described how that would happen with the approval of the final plat, and it would be modified condition that captures that.
Yes. So you would like, just so that I repeat it, so I'm understanding correctly, the, the berm along, well, the landscape buffer along Eustick and Locust Grove for the second phase of development would be constructed with the second phase of development prior to recreadation of the plat or submittal of surety?
Correct.
Yeah. And did the council wish to include a requirement for a sidewalk to be constructed in the areas where it's not existing today on that second phase?
I thought the testimony was that sidewalk is all in.
I'm, I'm not positive if it's on that. I think we're missing some, but I don't remember, I don't recall which phase it was in. Just one sec.
We didn't speak to it because I think...
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Mr. Palmer.
So I was sitting at that intersection yesterday, watching a guy ride a four-wheeler on the sidewalk all the way around.
I think it is existing. Excuse me.
Good?
I think we're good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Sonia.
Okay. And that clarity that has been added, everyone that voted in favor agrees?
Yes.
Nod your head. Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Can I just make a comment to the applicant? I really do like this subdivision. I mean, it's approved anyway, but kids need, they need a place to run. I'm also, I'm very impressed how many neighbors you got to come and, and support this, because generally, people don't want to take their time and spend their night with us unless they have something to, to complain about or something that they don't want to happen. So, good, good job.
Thank you. Okay, our next item, item 9B. Is the public hearing continued from October 2nd on H. 2018-0075. This public hearing was open. It had been continued. I'll open this asking for staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm not sure what's going on with my first slide there, but I'll show you an aerial of the, of the property here. This project's back before you. Again, it's a request for annexation and zoning and a conditional use permit. The site consists of 109 acres of land approximately, zoned RUT in Ada County, and is located west of North McDermott Road on the north side of West Eustick Road at 7020 West Eustick Road. Comprehensive plan designation is medium-density residential, and a school site is designated on the future land use map for this area. This project was heard by the city council on October 2nd and continued to tonight's meeting. In order to consider approval of the project, the applicant directed staff to prepare a recommendation for development agreement provisions and conditions of approval for the conditional use permit. Because staff and subsequently the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of the project, there were no conditions of approval included in the staff report. Staff is recommend, the staff recommendation, along with a revised conceptual development plan submitted by the applicant depicting a plan for the southern portion of the school property and the Sprigle property, both anticipated to develop in the future with residential uses, are shown here, right here. Actually, that's the old one. Oh, I messed up and did not include the new one in here. I will get that for you. Written testimony has been received from Jeff Bauer, given personally the applicant's representative in agreement with the recommended conditions of approval. Give me just a second here. All right, this is the revised concept plan that was submitted. Written testimony was also received from Jeffrey Wardle, Spink Butler, representing Woodside Avenue Investors property. They do object to the provision of a stub street only to the Flowers property. If you can see here, the applicant is proposing a local street stubbing right down here to the Flowers property. This is the Woodside property right here. They would like to, the street to be realigned slightly to the north of the existing NMID facility and facility and stub to the Woodside property. They're also requesting the school district grant an easement for extension of sewer distribution line to the properties to the east in the corridor south of the stadium and north of the main baseball diamond. Scope of easement to be determined. And then third, uh, written testimony has been received from David Ferdinand on behalf of the Baum family, uh, offering provision of land for a fire station and EMS facility to assist the school district in the need for, uh, closer emergency response in exchange for the ability to have sewer and water available to their property for subsequent annexation and development. Their property is currently in Canyon County and is outside of the city's area of, uh, city impact boundary. Staff will stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions? The applicant rep- representative.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Gary Allen. My work address is 601 West Bannock in Boise. I'm with Givens Persley Law Firm. I'm very pleased to be here this evening in support of the staff's recommendations for, um, Oaihe High School. Had a, a great collaboration with, with the staff, with the police and fire and, uh, with Public Works to come to what we think is a good resolution of the issues and concerns that, uh, you ha- you raised, uh, when we were here before you. I think most of the conditions are self-explanatory, but I would like to, uh, talk about a couple that were of, uh, you know, most concern last time. The first of those is the north-south connector road. And so if you look at the staff's condition of approval, um, you'd ask sort of like, okay, uh, what are the contingencies on this? Let's make sure we've got all of those covered. I think everybody agrees that a, uh, north-south connection here on McMillan is the best way to go forward. That's the first priority in the staff's condition of approval. That, uh, property owner has applied for annexation, so that one is, you know, uh, that, that's in your hands at this point. Now, we understand that you're not obligated to approve that annexation, um, so that there was a need for a Plan B. So Plan B is this connection over here on the east through, around the Spriggle parcel, um, to create a connection to McDermott. And, uh, we've, I wanted to show you this because we've really got three options for how we get through the Spriggle parcel. Either through Spriggle directly, through the Trilogy parcel to the north, or through to, to the Acclima parcel to the south. And so there's that, those together are Plan B. The, um, the condition of approval also calls for, you know, other potential options. We've thought about those as well and those are outlined in the yellow and the, and the purple here. So there's actually is interest from this, uh, property owner in purple and putting that road in upon annexation. Uh, and you've got two other options over here to the west, to Star Road. So that's as far as we can think through the contingencies. I think that's, you know, we're quite confident that one of those, uh, is gonna come through for us and that there will be two road accesses, um, at the time that the school opens. And that's what the condition requires. So let me talk a little bit about the Woodside parcel, um, as the second issue. Unless, did you have a question or, okay. Um, so, um, we have been working very hard to try to come to agreement with the Woodside developer. Um, the, uh, school district, and could you put up the site plan? The new site plan? And we have one that's bigger than that, that shows the south end.
Zoom in on that.
Maybe a couple pages down or blow it up or something. Okay. So there are a few things to note about, uh, the, what we're doing here. The first thing is that, um, as the staff mentioned, this Stool District is now going to complete a local road, uh, over to the edge of the Flowers' parcel. And that, the reason for that was to provide an, uh, an access to the parking lot that is off of the Collector Road. So, uh, we agree there's a benefit to the district to do that. We agreed to take the road over to the property line. And we also think that this alignment of the road here, wherever it goes, is, is the proper alignment, um, starting over here on the west. Um, the, one important thing to note is that the Spriggle parcel doesn't end where the proposed, uh, connection is. It actually continues to the north, to the center line of the canal. So the point of that is simply that there is no way to take this road over to the Woodside property without going through the Flowers' property. And that is an unknown at this point, um, how that would be accomplished. We did, we do not have that, um, set up now. So the developer would like us to take the, this road all the way across to his property. And, uh, in, the s- school district has offered to do so on this same alignment that we have here. And, uh, what the school district has offered to do is to take the road straight ahead over to the edge of the Flowers' parcel and then provide an easement or, or along the rest of its property in that same alignment that would go over to the Woodside parcel. The school district would pay for the part that's, uh, up to the Flowers' parcel. The developer would either build the road himself through the rest of the parcel, or the school district would pay for it and be reimbursed. That was unacceptable for the, to the developer for, uh, reasons that, uh, he will explain to you, I'm sure. But we felt like that was as far as the school district could and should go, um, in terms of, of providing that, that access over there. And nobody can guarantee without the assistance of a road agency that we can build that road today because of the intervention of the Flowers' parcel. We would not be very strongly object to jogging the road to the north in order to miss the Flowers' parcel because that would severely interfere with some of the ball fields over here and require some significant redesign. So here's what we ask of you on that one, is we, we, the school district commits to continue to work with the developer to resolve this. We're really very close, um, to, to having a resolution. We think that the condition that you've provided, uh, is consistent with our, um, coming to a deal and building the rest of that road if we can. So our, our request would be that you approve, uh, that condition, uh, the condition on Woodside that's in the staff report. Now, I think the rest of the conditions in the staff report are, um, are self-explanatory and, uh, self-explanatory and, um, my understanding is that they've satisfied all the needs of your staff. So we'd simply ask for an approval with those conditions. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you, Gary. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton.
I, I do have one, Gary. I apologize, I might have got lost a little bit in the explanation on this road. I think it's condition 1.1.8. Let me see if I'm even looking at the right one to start. Okay. And you're making reference to stubbing at the Flowers' parcel, but then providing an easement?
Correct.
Across your parcel, I guess jogging a little to the north, or would it just go straight across?
Goes straight across.
It would intersect that southern ball field somewhat, wouldn't it?
Um, we think we can work with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that needs to be reoriented, but it doesn't a significant design change.
Okay. So, so the idea would be, at least the last proposal was, construct it to the Flowers' parcel and then easement for the remainder across the school district property until it reaches the...
Right.
Eastern boundary?
Yes, and we also offered to build it and be reimbursed for the portion that is, uh, to the east of Flowers.
Okay. So that's not reflected in 1.1.8, but...
That's correct.
That's something the, the district to be willing to do.
That's something we would c- uh, commit to continue to working with the developer to figure that out. We think that the condition is appropriate for the approval of the school.
Okay.
And that we can work in, as a private agreement to get to the rest of the way, as, as well as sewer. Sewer is not required by your conditions of approval or by your, uh, your policies. And yet, you know, if we can work all of this out, sewer will be included. And, or at least an easement for sewer at the developer's cost.
Madam Mayor, as to the issue of, as to the issue of the sewer, is that resolved?
Uh, so what the, according to this, the, this, the Woodside parcel, according to your master plan, is supposed to be served by sewer from McDermott and Eustick. Um, the, the staff has said that this, it is permissive for the school district to provide sewer from another trunk line, from their trunk line over to this other parcel. And we're willing to do that. We don't want to make, that would be against your policy to make it mandatory.
Okay.
Other questions?
Not right now.
Yeah, we don't have any further questions. Justin, I do have a question for ACHD.
Madam Mayor, for the record, my name is Justin Lucas. I represent the Ada County Highway District. Business address is 3775 Adam Street, Garden City, Idaho.
Um, just the, the question about the, the road that's being requested, I, I believe I've seen it two different ways, where a development stubs it and, um, then the other developer continues the road through their project or pays to go through a project to get it to their piece of property. Or the development puts in half the road and what, what is typical?
Um, Madam Mayor, members of the council, each situation is unique. Um, and, uh, some, some extensions are very simple where the road is brought directly to the property line and carried forward by the adjacent, uh, property owner. Um, sometimes the ACHD commission chooses not, uh, to make that a requirement for whatever reason. Maybe it's a, uh, there's some sort of geographic, um, issue associated with the property or some other constraint. In this specific situation, uh, the ACHD commission heard, um, all of these issues at a, at a public hearing and the final decision is, is what is located in the staff report. And so that is what, um, what is applicable here, is what our commission decided on this specific application. So I don't know if that helps you, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, but...
I think that was a really good political que- um, answer.
Thank, thank you.
So, um, for the public record, why don't you tell us what that is? Otherwise, I'll go and find it in the staff report.
Yeah, I, I would ask staff to bring up. I hate to put words in my commission's mouth and I'll never do it. So if, if the ACHD conditions of approval are available, I would request that those be brought up for your review. Um, I don't want to try and, oh, craft a, a, a condition off the top of my head. And I know that they are available, uh, in the staff report, um, and we did provide a final copy of our staff report, um, to the city well before this application was heard.
So that was the, the, um, decision of the ACHD commission?
Correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For signups this evening, first is Jim Hunter, would like to address the council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Also, Jeffrey Wardle signed up. He represents, I'd like him to talk first, it'll be more efficient, then give me a couple minutes to close, that's it. So I'd like to reverse order if that's okay?
Okay. Sure.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Jeffrey Wardle. My business address is 251 East Front Street. I appreciate in Boise, I, but I am a resident of Paramount, so it's nice to do city council in your own town 'cause you can go home earlier. Sonia, can you pull up, uh, can you pull up the, our PowerPoint? Oh.
Switch screen, excuse me.
Okay. Uh, there is a lot that has transpired since we sent you our letter on Friday. And I appreciate the efforts of the West Ada School District. I appreciate the efforts of their council, uh, because both Mr. Freeman and Mr. Allen and myself and our clients have met and had multiple discussions. As, as Mr. Allen, uh, discussed, there is a lot of progress that's been made, but we're still not quite there. And what I wanted to show you briefly was, you know, this was the alignment that had been proposed. And the reason that it was problematic for us was that they were showing it coming across the Flowers' property to location here and where we don't necessarily know what the elevation of Eustick is going to be coming off that ramp. Because remember that the interchange is projected to be to the west of McDermott. That is fundamentally our issue and concern. So in further discussions with the West Ada School District, they proposed that, yes, we could take access and bring it across the north. So there are three unknowns that are keeping us from telling you tonight that, yeah, we have a solution. Uh, we had proposed earlier today to the West Ada School District that Woodside would can pay the cost of construction of the entirety of the road from its termination here across to Woodside's property in that northern configuration. We're ready to do that. The concern that we have is that obviously with Public Works bidding and Public Works projects, if the West Ada School District construction, there is a significant likelihood of higher expense than what could be done if Boise Hunter Homes, Woodside Avenue Investors were to do it itself. And I think that's the solution we've proposed with the school district for the sewer. Grant us the easement, we will construct it. The one issue, the one issue that remains is there is this Nampa Meridian irrigation facility. And they are proposing to tile it up to this point right here. And as we've talked about the alignment, the second unknown is we do not necessarily know what Nampa Meridian would respond to this because this came up very late, that they were amenable to taking it to the north side. And the third is that you see there, the blue portion, is the Flowers have not been engaged by either party about what the resolution is here because as you come across straight, there's gonna be a portion there. Now, we, we don't anticipate that it's going to be a problem, but until we know, we don't know what we don't know. So the, the three things we don't know, which are, are keeping us from telling you, yes, we're in total agreement with their proposal to grant an easement to... to grant an easement to extend this right of way at some point in the future across here is that, one, we don't know what Nampa Meridian's requirements are going to be. Two, we don't know what Flowers' response is going to be. And third, nobody really knows the cost of what this extension would be. So what we had asked the West Ada School District this afternoon, again, we've had ongoing conversations and discussions, is if the West Ada School District will just commit to extending this road over the Nampa Meridian facility, we will build it to the east.
Mr. Wardle, you are summarizing.
I am summarizing. And that's, that's, that's what we had asked, that's what we had proposed to them, is extend the road to the Nampa Meridian facility, cross that, and then we will, we will pay the cost to extend the road there on the north side. We're close, but we're not yet fully in agreement. But I do appreciate the effort that's been put into date to try to resolve this issue. And that's our requested condition, that and sewer.
Okay, council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
It, it sounded like, that's a little bit what Gary said of, from your reaction, I take it I might have heard it wrong. But it sounded like maybe the middle ground would be just that, the district builds it to the Nampa Meridian jointer there, crossing, quite frankly, and either construct the whole thing and get reimbursed or provide an easement that allows you to construct it and pay for it, and which sounds like that's what you were describing.
So the, the nuance here, Madam Mayor, Commissioner Borton, is the West Ada School District has proposed constructing it just to that blue point there and not crossing the Nampa Meridian facility. And our response is, since they're tiling it to this dark area right here, if they would just extend that, we will construct the whole thing. Just get us to the north side and we'll, we'll pay to construct that at our expense at, at some point in the future, we coordinate with them.
Madam Mayor, to that point, is it your preference that it, the easement option be the one that goes forward rather than they construct it and you reimburse?
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Borton, that's one of the conversations we've had with them because nobody knows. We know essentially what it costs to build a local street based upon our experience. But the West Ada School District, being a public entity and having to bid this as a, a public works project, they don't necessarily have confirmation as to what their cost is. And so we're reticent to commit to reimburse them where we don't necessarily have control over what that cost may be. And so that's why our proffer was, look, you provide us the right of way that can be granted, dedicated in the future, and we will build it at our expense, just like we proposed with the sewer easement.
Madam Mayor, question through you to Mr. Borton. What is the difference between a right of way and an easement?
I think, in this context, I think it's just interchangeable. We're just, they're going to provide the location where the future street would be located, that you would construct at least.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burton, you know, as we've had this conversation with the West Ada School District, I think Commissioner Borton's absolutely in agreement. I mean, that's what we envision because that is going to be a public street, so it's going to need to be dedicated. And that's, that's whether we call it an easement for now that's going to be dedicated or a right of way that's going to be dedicated. We, we get there the same place if they just commit that it can be dedicated in the future, once constructed to ACHD local street standards.
Mr. Nerry, do you agree with all that? I just thought I'd throw another attorney in there. Maybe Mr. Allen after that, I, I don't know.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, no, I, I do agree. I think it's, I, I think what he's talking about, we can make that work with, with our code, so.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Hold up then, to narrow the issue, is it now focused on the Nampa Meridian crossing? Is, is where there's some disconnect and who would pay for it and provide it?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, yeah, I really think that's where it is. Now, the West Ada School District has conditioned sewer upon our acceptance of this, but I think we're all in agreement with sewer. And so the sole issue has been, you know, where does the crossing happen and, and who, who gets, who gets it across? I think we're all in agreement that once, once the Nampa Meridian facility is tiled, we will construct from there to the Woodside boundary within the, the, the local street section, right of way that they provide. But yeah, it's, I think that's, that's fair. Councilmember Borton is, it's, it's getting across that. And that's an engineering question and it's a cost question that nobody has the answer to yet just because it's, it's been very fluid in the last 96 hours. And we appreciate the fluidity. I mean, I think everybody has diligently tried to resolve this issue.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Jim Hunter, 1132 East Laguna Shore Lane, Eagle, Idaho. Anyway, just, I'll just kind of be kind of quick, but a couple of things that weren't said here today was, one is, all we really want is access to our property. If this was us building it, we've always been required to extend it completely to the other guy's property. School District wanted us shortchange it, end it here. We actually said fine, okay? I offered them $100,000 to pay for the extension up north of the blue area. But I don't want to have to go condemn Flowers' property, I have no power to do that, so I'm still landlocked. I simply want them to cross the canal and I'll build the road the rest of the way. That's our proposal to them, which they rejected, after rejecting my first $100,000 offer to them. And by the way, when I asked them what it does cost to, to, to tile the canal or build a road, their engineer said he had no idea. I said, but reimburse us whatever it costs. I said, I have, I can't do business with reimbursing somebody that has no idea what it costs. So here's my 100 grand. My estimate is that that road costs 60,000 excluding the crossing, and the crossing has a cost associated with it. So our current ask to them is, please just extend, extend the, the red road to the north of the canal and give us an unencumbered easement and we'll build it the rest. Pure and simple, two asks. Cross the canal, let us build it, give us an easement. So I would respectfully ask that that be modified into the conditions of approval, and we're all in agreement. I stand for any questions? That's my request.
Any questions? Ms. Mylan.
So is the $100,000 still part of that deal?
No, they rejected that, so I said, I will build it, just cross the canal for me. And, and I'll build it whatever it costs across this link. I just need an unencumbered easement to get to our property.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylan.
So you, do you know the objection to, to building over that? Is it because of the cost to go over the canal?
I don't, I'm not exactly sure what their objections are. But they're tiling it this entire way, they're putting parking lot over it. They're dealing with the Nampa Meridian Irrigation District on that issue. And we would just like them to get across the canal with the road and give us an easement and let us build it to our property. That's it in a nutshell, kind of.
I'm sure the issue is time.
I'm sorry?
I mean, they're going to say, we'll get you an easement, and they have to work with Flowers and Nash, or the irrigation district. We all know that that's not necessarily an easy process. That's why you're asking them to do that, right?
Yeah, they're working on this and, you know, I mean, I've, I've dealt with these irrigation districts. It takes a while, but my point is, I'm not asking them to do that tomorrow. I'm just saying, they're going to be working on this over the course of the next year. You know, if you guys can do that, we'll build the road, and that's our request. You know, quite frankly, the gentleman said, this affects their ball fields. Well, if you look at, they're getting the real estate, residential real estate development business to the south. They could have placed a ball field down there or two. But they chose this land plan totally excluding any access to our property. The other thing that was very interesting is, I know the gentleman was here from ACHD. The traffic study that was done, submitted to ACHD, did not even mention, had not one scintilla of mentioning the extension of Idaho 16. It totally ignored the fact there's a big freeway coming through and it's going to landlock a couple of properties. Maybe we should think about that in our traffic study. Not a single person looked at it. So anyway, that's, that's our request, ma'am, is, Madam Mayor and members of the council is, just get us across the canal and give us an unencumbered easement and let us build the road to our property. It's two simple things. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Paula Gray, signed up to testify. I don't see Paula. Madam Mayor, that was all those that indicated they wanted to provide testimony.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony? Mr. Allen?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Gary Allen, 601 West Banniken, Boise.
Thank you.
There are a lot of things I want to say about the Mr. Hunter's testimony, but I'm going to get to brass tacks and talk about, just about the key issue here. And that is, you know, it's not just about the cost of crossing the irrigation canal. The real problem is the Flowers' property is in the way. And so we can't have a condition on our school that requires us to make a deal with Flowers. You know, someday, maybe ACHD needs to condemn that property, or if the Flowers won't give it up voluntarily. They should, I mean, it gives them access to their, their parcel. But we can't control that, and that's too important of a thing to have, you know, standing in the way of the certificate of occupancy of the school. So we think that drawing the line at the Flowers' parcel is the proper place. If they're concerned about negotiating with the Nampa Meridian Irrigation District, we're willing to build that portion of the, of the road, assuming we can get approval. But we think they should pay for it. We're already paying for two-thirds of, of this road across. We've come more than, more than halfway that way. They want us to go about 80% of the way. And, you know, that, we just felt like that was the right place to draw that line. The condition that you've got allows, you know, gives us the flexibility we need to, to do our part and not get tied up in, in some other problem there. So again, we, we will recommit to trying to work out a deal, but we think the staff's condition is the right one. So that's what we would ask you to approve tonight.
Okay, council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Gary, is the, was the idea that didn't come to us, a solution that this road would jog north, it wouldn't need to touch the Flowers' property, but it would jog northeast, cross at somebody's expense? And then, whether it goes straight across or perhaps follow it down to the southeast along the northern portion? There's not an exhibit where somebody's shown us that, but it sounds like that was what's described as a close solution, but you guys didn't get there.
Yeah, well.
Is that right?
I, I had not heard anyone speaking good things about realigning the road. I think everybody agrees the road should go straight across.
So, Madam Mayor, so the Flowers' property in every scenario was always included as having to been a willing participant?
Pardon?
The Flowers' property had to be a willing participant under any scenario?
In any scenario I've seen, yes.
Yeah, the jogging north, cross it, staying on school district property was not one of the scenarios?
That was not one of the scenarios, yes.
Mr. Allen, I don't see any, anything. I know you have emergency busing as a provision, but any further discussion with ACHD on a safe route to school route?
Madam Mayor, I don't believe we, we have had additional discussions with ACHD. That is a possibility, of course, if the levy passes to, you know, develop a plan with them. But we have not had any further discussions on that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
You know, this, this question mark of how access will be given to Mr. Hunter and his property, I believe is important. Before, if, if I were, if I were a landowner and if I had property that I owned in that location, having this body approve this application without knowing how that's going to be affected or how that's going to be remedied, I would, I would be, I'd be, I, I just think it would be a lot cleaner if you guys could come to a decision and figure out how, you know, Mr. Hunter can have access, you know, to his property. It is just, it just would be cleaner, without having question marks and we're going to deal with this in a year, we're going to deal with this in a couple of years. Is there a possibility that this can be arranged sooner than later?
We are, you know, we're about this close today, so I think there is a possibility. Like I say, we're committed to continuing that conversation. You know, none of us control what Flowers does, except the Highway District could.
Madam Mayor.
If that was important to construct, or ITD.
It sounds like you can go north, though. Would you be, would you be okay with going north, meeting them at that area so that they, they can build their own road going to that, that specific area that we're the, I don't know, what, wherever? Just, just a little bit, little bit north of where you're, you're wanting to stub the road in right now?
My understanding is that if the road jogs north, even if it cuts back south, that's still going to affect facilities. Am I correct? Yeah, so we have to redesign the site and could lose facilities if we have to do that. And, you know, that's not, you know, ultimately, here's, you know, here's what's going to happen, is someday, ITD's going to come in there and they're going to say, okay, now we need to, we're, we're cutting off access to this property. We have to create an alternate plan. The ACHD report does talk about that. And the ITD does have a plan to create a north-south road along the edge of the, of the Woodside parcel. Now, it's nice, it'd be, it is a good thing to have a, a second access over to the north-south collector that we're talking about. But at that point, ITD is going to be obligated to mitigate that problem with access. If Flowers is not cooperating, they can condemn the property at that point. So, you know, it'll certainly be, that will, issue will certainly be resolved. The rest of this is about who pays for a culvert over the road, you know? If it's important to you, put a, put a condition in that says one way or another. We think the fair way to cut that is to do it at the Flowers' parcel. So, you know, you, you have the ability to put in a condition that resolves this. I would say we'd much rather you not talk about realigning the road as part of that.
Thank you.
And not force us to make a deal with Flowers that we would affect the opening of the school.
Other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
There was pivoting a little bit back to the sewer. There was a proposed condition of approval in Jeff's letter of October 19th with regards to an easement for the extension of the sewer distribution, et cetera. I didn't see it within the listed conditions and maybe I missed it.
Right, so the, as I mentioned earlier, the, your policy would not require the school district to provide sewer to this property. It's an optional thing on our point. As part of a overall resolution of the road issue, we were willing to offer the sewer easement for them to construct the sewer at their cost. That was one of the outstanding issues in our negotiation. It would be contrary to city policy to make that mandatory at this point.
Okay, it was both or neither, is that a fair summary? Both or neither?
I don't, you know.
Somewhat.
I mean, we want to have a deal at the end of the day. Both, let's just say both.
Madam Mayor. Councilman Borton, Madam Mayor, I just want to make clarification on that. Thanks for, thanks for bringing that up, thanks for bringing that up, Councilman Borton, and thanks for clarifying. Because you mentioned it earlier, and I talked to the city engineer on the phone because I didn't know if you, you quite got that right. But it was his intent that we wanted to have access from your property to these other properties for sewer, but building the sewer was not going to be a requirement. But the city engineer did want to make sure the easements were accessible to that, that property, just as you said. So, I didn't see, I didn't see that condition in the, in the staff report either, but I just checked on that. City engineer wanted to make sure that was, that was taken care of.
That is a little different from what he told us last week, at least as we heard it, but nonetheless, you know, we want there to be both at the end of the day.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
One other question for police and fire with regards to, it was highlighted, it's this map gets to the issue, it's condition 1.1.11. Maybe you can pull that up. It talks about the secondary access, and initially at the last meeting, there was discussion of going north or going east as the two options. The condition as written has those two options, but it has, it includes "or other means not listed," which I believe opens the door for going west or south. And in light of the concern that necessitates a second access, is the west and south viable and okay to include? Or should it be limited to hopefully the primary considerations that Gary referenced, going north or east?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, I'll answer first, and then Lieutenant Colliani can chime in. Certainly from fire, our primary preference would be to go north. The reason for that is that going to McMillan allows us access over again to Highway 16. This is an unusual area for our fire department. As you know, we cover the district properties as well as the city through a mutual aid or an MOU at the district. We cover Highway 16 all the way down to the river. And so, this, this area here that we're planning for a future fire station is not only going to cover the proposed high school and the school, the development that's going on, as well as the Oak subdivision, but also is going to help us get north between Chindon Boulevard and Highway 44. When Highway 16 was built, if you've driven that highway, there's a median all the way down the middle of it. And so, we had to develop a mutual aid agreement with Star Fire District, where we cover everything north, they cover everything south. It's the only way to access car wrecks on that, on that state highway. So, our first preference, to answer your question, would be a northern secondary access to McMillan. Going to Star Road, going west is a possibility, but, but to be direct in answer your question, our preference would be to go to the north.
So, I'm not, I don't know if I can add much more to that. We had discussed those options, and in our meetings, we discussed the applicant looking at other options, as long as we have a secondary public access into that location before a CO is issued. From a police perspective, that made us happy and that satisfied our need. The, the road that goes out to Star is certainly a longer stretch, you know, for them as well in terms of land and building it. I think that's more expensive and, you know, we have to loop around, but it still met the needs and what we were looking for. We're looking for a secondary access. We felt the McMillan one was good, but if they wanted to come up with other options and as long as it was there for us, we were happy with that.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Colliani, is there, I, I know I'm beating this drum of pedestrian safety. Is there any concern from the police department on the safety for kids and bikes and walkers out in that area? That's not walkers pushing a walker, I mean, just pedestrians.
There was discussion, and I, I don't, I can't comment to it about busing, because there was challenges there that we see all across the city. If there's not sidewalks, if there's inadequate infrastructure that allows someone to walk to school, there is a program in place and they could comment to it that's driven by the state statute, I believe, that requires them to bus. And so, they have committed that they would be following that and be busing a great majority of the kids there that don't have vehicles, but at a high school level, most of these kids drive. So, they would, they would have to comment on what they've done there. If that's not accurate.
The school district's busing committee has met and has adopted the busing policy for this school. So, that's in place today.
I've been walking at the elementary schools, and I've been asking them who rides the bus. They don't ride buses. I, I mean, I don't know why no one is concerned about this other than me, but I, I think we're setting up an accident ready to happen, because those kids, if they don't have a car, they can't find someone to drive them, they are not going to take the bus. I've had four teenagers, they did not take the bus. I, I hope you work with ACHD and you get a plan.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I remember reading, I think in one of the materials about the busing plan. I can appreciate the mayor's concern. I think that I would be more concerned if this was a middle school or an elementary school, although you drive past any middle school or elementary school these days, you see kids aren't riding the bus, it's mom or dad that seems to be taking them to school. But if you could share with us a little bit about what the, the busing policy is related to this area, just so that we're all aware.
So, I'd like to, Joe, would you be the one to address that?
Yeah, you could. Somebody who lives at this.
High school? Good evening, Joe.
Joe Yocum, Westlake School District, 1303 East Central Drive, Meridian, Idaho. Madam Mayor, members of the council, glad to be here this evening. So, our safety bus committee met recently, and we did recommend safety busing for all students who will attend Waihe High School, and our board did approve that. So, that's already in place. That's good for three years, so that will be in effect when Waihe High School opens. And so, what that, that committee meets on an annual basis, and then it revisits safety bus zones on a three-year rotation. So, Waihe won't come up again for another three years from, from this month. And some of the things that the committee looks, looks at are sidewalks and connections through subdivisions and safe routes to school. And we have walk zones all over the district. If you go to the district webpage and you go to the transportation tab and look at walk zones, you'll see that there are walk zones within the mile and a half distance to the school at probably all of our schools. Willow Creek, for example, that used to be just a square mile, and we were busing students from one corner because there was no way through the subdivisions or around, so we were safety busing. So, that's how the process works, and it's an annual, annual review.
So, this would just make it in effect for an hour or one year after the school opens?
Oh, the committee would meet again in March of '21 to review the, they, they meet in March on an annual basis. So, whenever this comes up again for it to be reviewed, and the committee looks at everything.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Joe, do you know how many students you've got, high school students you've got in that kind of one and a half mile radius that are going to be impacted by this? Let's say the school's built tomorrow.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, I do not.
Ballpark, we're talking, we're talking about 10 kids, are we talking about 200 high school students?
Seventy-five to 100.
Okay. It's a big number.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for Joe, while we have him up here?
Madam Mayor, just to clarify, so you are going to provide a bus plan three years from now or three years from when the school is open?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, it is in fact right now, and once the school opens, then it will be reviewed probably the March before, because it will come up for the next school year. So, March of '20, it would be on the list again to take a look at for the next, for the next few, few years.
With the commitments through 2021 at this point.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So, just to fill in the blanks there, the policy will be in place as long as it's needed. It can only be in place for three years at a time before it's reviewed. And I, Joe whispered in my ear that one thing I didn't mention, I want to make sure everybody is aware, is that there is an emergency, a second emergency access going in at McDermott immediately. What we're talking, we've been talking about is a second public street access. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may correct one item, Eric Exine just informed me that we have zero students currently residing within a mile and a half of the high school site.
Zero students.
Thanks, Mr. Exine. Appreciate it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I should have asked, Gary, if I can have you come up. I, I don't think I got one other question answered. It was when we were talking about the, the offer to provide the sewer easement that might not otherwise be conditioned, but it was part of trying to create a holistic solution, is the language, if it went that way, if that was part of a solution, is it the language within Mr. Wardle's October 19th letter, that proposed condition?
Do, I don't have that in front of me.
You might take a second and go look at it if need be, but I don't know if that's the right language that you contemplated. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
Why don't we take a five-minute break?
Okay.
We will reconvene in five minutes. We will reconvene in five minutes.
I think we're okay.
Okay. We have all night.
Yeah, sure. Don't we? Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Gary Allen, 601 West Bannock in Boise. I was provided a copy of the October 19th letter by Spink Butler, which includes proposed language for a sewer easement. Our preference remains that the staff conditions be approved as proposed. However, as part of an overall agreement with regard to the sewer line, this language would work for what we, for providing access to that property.
Any further comments?
I don't think so. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any follow-up questions from council? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
For like the first time ever, I have a couple of opinions. One, I think we need to require that it connects to McMillan. Love the idea of, they were all built, but I think just to be most realistic and efficient that the north connection needs to be the one that we require happen if this is going to happen. For the other opinion, can we go back to the slide that's got the red road? So, I keep struggling with this because I'm like, spending tax dollars here, which I hate doing, but trying to figure out how to help the property owner figure out what to do. And what comes to me is that if this were to be built as a neighborhood, there's going to be a connection over there regardless, with far less heartburn over it. If we don't require that the bridge be built, that still could leave that property, the rest of this constructed, and that property still locked out should the Nampa Meridian Irrigation District say no, for whatever reason. So for that reason, for the rest of this to be built, I think it makes more sense to have that bridge crossed, figuratively and literally, so that there's no longer any possible roadblocks to that, to the rest of it being able to be constructed, and along with the easement that Mr. Hunter requested to be able to build the rest of it himself. That way, he doesn't have to worry about the Nampa Meridian Irrigation District, for some reason, not making it happen, and the rest of this can be built without it. You don't worry, because again, if it was built as a neighborhood, this wouldn't even be a topic of discussion because it would be handled. So, to McMillan and cross, create the bridge.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I agree with you, Mr. Palmer.
Whoa. Any other discussion? What would you like to do?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylon.
I understand the access needing to get to that other property, the Boise Hundred Homes property. I don't think it's right that we require that to go through the Flowers parcel, though, since there's no control over what the Flowers do. But it could be put on the district to either get an agreement with Flowers or create an alternative route, which would mean them redesigning much of their development. But doing nothing doesn't seem right either, so... I don't think that we should necessarily require that it is going through the Flowers parcel, is my point. Hopefully, that'll get them a little closer.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I can ask a, I'm going to ask a question, and you can nod, Gary, or come up and answer it. But the idea of...
We'd want him to come up and answer it.
Probably come up and answer it. A little more official than a nod.
The nod on the public record just doesn't count.
The idea of the easement dedicated right-of-way for the future public street that would take this, the red line, the local street, directly east. Granted, the Flowers parcel, the district doesn't control, but I assume on the, when it comes then into the district parcel, that's where the location of the dedication would be, straight across to the...
Straight across, yes.
To the east, yes, okay. So there'd be the triangular out parcel of Flowers that would have to be solved somehow.
Yes, Gary Allen, 601 West Bannock, thank you, Madam Mayor, yes. It's the little bit of the Flowers parcel that has to be solved.
And is it the district's, if there were a resolution to that effect, that condition 1.1.8 would be modified to account for those additional concessions by the district with regards to providing the easement necessary for that dedication?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Not in there yet.
Well, you, Madam Mayor, Commissioner, Councilmember Burton, if you want that to be part of your conditions, we can also make a private agreement. But if you want to enforce that as part of what you do, that would require a change in that condition.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Why we have Mr. Allen up here? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
If there's additional comment on this, if not, I'm going to move to close the public hearing on item H 2018 0075.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Some comments, hats off to the parties working diligently to resolve this and these issues. Definitely, everyone acknowledges the critical importance that the specific language has in having this high school be properly considered. I think there's a lot of meeting in the middle that has had to happen to make something like this come forward, and I think there's a solution that allows it to go forward that does somewhat meet in the middle. In light of everything we've heard and seen in the record through today, there's a couple of solutions that, for me, I think is appropriate and warrants approval of this project. I think all things being said, I'm supportive of what the school district is presenting as that, I keep referencing the 1.1.8, the condition of approval as written, but to include language to capture the easement for the dedication of right-of-way to facilitate the future public street to be constructed at the Woodside's property's expense at some point. I think along with that, the district's agreement to utilize the sewer easement condition of approval put in Mr. Wardle's letter of October 19th seems to be another appropriate piece to include as part of their joint agreement. With regards to condition 1.1.11, which speaks to that secondary access, I think Councilman Palmer's correct in really trying to focus the effort in opportunity to go north, if at all possible, but also that condition as written includes the east-west connection over to McDermott, which is through property that the district currently controls, and it has good language within it already, this condition that speaks to if Highway 16 is extended and interferes with it, then another public street access would have to be constructed. So, the condition 1.1.11, I think the concern from police and fire about going east or perhaps south back to Eustick really shouldn't be on the table, and quite frankly, it might be academic because you might have a solution north and to the east anyway. So the parenthetical part of, Sonya, if you could put up that condition real quick, it might make a little more sense.
1.1.11?
Yes, please. So, the condition as written, I think, is appropriate, and the two little ayes are the two options, that's the north or to the east. I would strike or other means not listed and focus the solution to one of those two solutions, I think. Again, that might not be an issue in any way, but provide some greater clarity, and I think that's supportive of what our public service, public safety has been promoting. All of the other conditions of approval, I think, hats off to everybody in working hard to get those together. I think they provide a good path for this school to be successful. There's a million unknowns. The district doesn't build high schools every year, and the city doesn't see them come before us every year. But I think we've done a really good job of collaborating and sometimes kind of jumping off the dock together. And I mentioned this at the last hearing, if this is somewhat leapfrog development, I would agree. I think it is, and I think it kind of has to be. And I think that's the fabric that we create somewhat when we approve, you know, the developments at the pace that we approve them. Each residential development comes with a commitment from us to provide police and fire and acknowledge that public schools and public parks are all going to come with it. So, it's difficult to have a philosophy that promotes improvement of private property and private development without acknowledging that we're also making the same commitment to support all of these other parts of our community and our public school system is of paramount importance, so... Those are the, my thoughts, at least, on a couple of conditions of approval that could get tweaked to capture some of the good cooperative spirit of the parties here and would be the basis of my support for this application.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion?
I would move that we approve H 2018 00... Can we close the public hearing?
Yes.
I move we approve H 2018 0075 to include, boy, all of the conditions as cited in my comments just a moment ago, and inclusive of all the proposed conditions of approval that were presented by staff in the most recent staff report. Clear enough?
Mr. Neri and Sonya, did he hit on everything you needed to have answered?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, with the changes you mentioned previously?
Yes, so I kind of, I went ready, fire, aim a little bit with conditions within a motion prior to making the motion, so strike it, reverse it, and those become part of the motion.
Thank you.
That make sense?
To clarify what, Madam Mayor, to clarify what was part of your condition, what was, just to clarify, what was the access to the Woodside property? Or did you not include that in your...
Yeah, Madam Mayor, condition 1.1.8, you can scroll up a little bit. Here, Sonya. So that would, that would remain but be modified to capture the school district's concession, I guess, through their discussions as presented today to include provisions for a public roadway easement and future dedication along their own parcel connecting to the east. It does not address the Flowers parcel. Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilman Burton, so does it cross the, are you required to them to construct it across the Nampa Meridian Irrigation District facility or to it? To the property, Madam Mayor, to the property boundary. I don't believe it contemplates constructing the crossing.
To the Flowers property.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Unless there's a second, I want to do a slight tweak substitute.
One second.
I have a motion and a second.
Take the discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Does that mean I have an amended?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as an amended motion, I move everything Councilman Cavener, not Councilman, Councilman Burton had in his motion, with the exception of requiring, because it doesn't guarantee that he's going to be able to construct access. So the school goes in, there's no guarantee that there's going to be a way to get there. But if we require that there is the way built, then at the same time the school goes in, it's, the bridge is there, and then he's guaranteed access to that bridge, not having to deal with any other governments, just he's got his easement locked in. So, all of the conditions and comments in Councilman Burton's motion but requiring that the school district construct the bridge across the canal and stop there and provide the easement to be able to have a future developer construct his own road.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylon.
Is that with some reimbursement or all on the...
On the district.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
The challenge I had with that is either it would be a crossing upon property the district doesn't own, I believe, so they couldn't do it, or it would require, you know, a northern jog and redesign of the district's property, which I thought, all things being considered, was not the appropriate solution.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I agree, I'd rather it go straight across, but without the Flowers property owners on board. And so maybe even adjusting the motion, if this is something that is doable and makes sense, that either all parties have an agreement to be able to guarantee the access to the parcel to the east or construct the bridge and provide the easement. Flowers property not being relevant to, if they don't get on board, then they go around it.
Well, since I don't have a second, Mr. Neri is... No, to the substitute.
That was a substitute motion.
Mr. Neri, is there a way that this particular issue can be isolated and that... Mr. Neri, is there a way that this particular issue can be isolated and that the parties come back? If the council wanted to take action tonight and leave this as a pending item to be addressed, can they do that?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, so, this would be a condition, I'm trying to see, is this a DA condition, Sonya, or a CUP condition?
Development agreement.
Okay. So, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, the applicant, the property owner can always come back and request an amendment or a modification of the development agreement. If you don't require it, there would be no reason to come back and modify the agreement. If you do require it, and for some reason, there can't be made, the issues of concern of crossing the Napier Meridian Unlicensed Agreement, the parties coming to some agreement in some fashion, the school district can always come back and request you modify the agreement and take that requirement away. But if you don't require it, there is no mechanism for the adjoining property to come back and request you modify it and now require it. So, your only way to essentially put a pin in it and allow it to be considered later if circumstances warrant is to require it, because then they can come back and ask you to not require it.
Can we take action on this application and bring the DA requirements back at the next council meeting?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
So, can you go ahead, and if council were to approve the project, the annexation, all three of these items?
Okay.
Then can they delay the development agreement and conditions to the next council meeting to adopt at that time?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, yes, the problem is, is normally what we do is we create the findings and the conditions, and then we create the development agreement. So, that's the natural progression of it. So, all you would see next is the findings and conditions. If for some reason, at the, if you want to modify it, there to again, remove a requirement is cleaner and more acceptable than to add a requirement later that you didn't require now. You can do it, I mean, we've considered that in other actions, but, so you can, before, once you make those findings, that's what we base the DA on. So, yes, if you want to leave this open, and maybe within two weeks when the findings come back, that would probably be the 13th, I guess?
Seventh.
Oh, maybe, yeah, the 7th, right. So, on the 7th, and you want to reopen it to make another motion, you can do that. But I think what Sonya's looking for tonight is what findings and conditions do you want her to prepare for approval so that we can then create a development agreement subsequent to that?
And Madam Mayor, if I may, I'm very concerned about where we're going with this, with the alignment of the east-west local street and the easement to the east property boundary to the Woodside property. I would feel much more comfortable if we continued this and the applicant worked with Boise Hunter Homes to come up with a, or Woodside Development to come up with a location and had ACHD sign off on the alignment and the configuration of the future street.
Completely agree.
It's going to be really funky if they go up and go around the Flowers property and the east.
Just trying to help you on that. And give the school district some certainty on the direction that the council wants to go. So, I guess, Council, we do have a motion on the table to vote on that approves this application with the road stopping at the district property line. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton?
I also want to echo Mr. Burton's comments about how awesome this process has been with the collaboration between the two parties. I would add one more and say, you know, when this happens again in the future, when you guys, when West Ada builds another school and has a steering committee, I would hope that a member of the city council or a member of the city of Meridian sits on that steering committee, that we are involved with that process. When we talk about collaboration, we talk about being on the same page, I think that speaks to that, you know? I think that we could have eliminated a lot of these problems and a lot of these concerns and all these questions that we're debating right now if you would have just reached out, and it would have been a lot cleaner, I believe. But that said, I agree with staff. I personally, I don't like approving projects, whether it's this or anything else, when there is open-ended questions that are very serious like this property. And if I were Jim Hunter with Boise Hunter Homes and with this Woodside, I would have some serious reservations with this, and I get it. And so, until this is resolved and we know that there is an agreement in place between the two parties, and we know how, you know, there's going to be access to that property for sure, with i's dotted and t's crossed, I feel like I am in support of it until that is resolved, so. Those are my comments.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
Yeah, I just, I can't remember any other application that we allowed a land to be, property to be landlocked without any, some kind of requirements. I would be more comfortable continuing this.
Yeah.
If they were this close today, maybe they can be this close by our next meeting. So, I think we're all, you know, we all want this to happen, we're all on the same page, I think. If it's just continued for that one issue, not to reopen anything else, just continue it for the one issue so they can get this worked out, get the access agreement figured out, I would be a lot more comfortable with that.
Make a substitute motion?
Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanor?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Okay, or not all i's, the i's have it. Okay, item 9C is under Public Works Department.
Our team's not doing so well, so it doesn't matter. We're not doing so good. We're all right there. It's a fascinating discussion, and I value the fact that you guys are sitting there making those decisions, so thank you. If it's all right, I'm going to stick to script because I know it's late and...
If you'll just give a few minutes because it's hard to hear.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. I'm here tonight requesting approval of an employee resource to manage solid waste activities within the city to be funded by the Enterprise Fund. As you're aware, solid waste efforts are managed by a committee approach today. This topic's been part of our conversations for a while now. Over the last year, significant discussions have been occurring around several solid waste topics. We've had the Hefty Energy Bag Program, we've had the recycling fee discussions, we now have landfill tipping fee discussions going on, and additionally, there's a growing need for technical analysis related to programs around solid waste, and there's an ever-increasing need from our community around education and outreach related to solid waste. So, as you're aware, we had a team, Public Works and Finance and Legal, look at the duties and responsibilities that are going on in solid waste these days, and did a work breakdown structure analysis, looking at over 1,900 hours annually that are required to keep this program going. And with that, what you've got in front of you is a budget amendment request that we feel is appropriate to approve for a staffing resource so that we can bring those responsibilities to a central point of contact within the city to report to Public Works to address the ongoing issues around solid waste. Maybe I'll stop there. In summary, what we are looking for is budget amendment approval in the amount not to exceed $93,440, which you have in front of you, and I'd be happy to take any questions at this point.
Council, any questions? There are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanor?
New Public Works liaison isn't here, I'm happy to move that we approve this a budget amendment for an environmental solid waste coordinator analyst for a not-to-exceed amount of $93,440.
My motion is second. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanor?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
All i's, most carried.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your support.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work you've done.
You bet.
Okay, item 10A is under our Community Development Department. Comprehensive Plan Vision Document.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thanks for having me here tonight. I'll try to be brief. I'm going to be going over with you the comprehensive process to date and the direction we're On the screen is a timeline for the project and shows where we're at today, which is wrapping up the vision stage and moving into the My Meridian Choices segment. Part of the reason I'm here tonight is to touch base regarding the conclusion of the My Meridian Vision Phase, which is a core and base for much of the upcoming work. You can see we basically have four kind of segments, and we're starting the third one. This, real quick, is an overview of outreach and engagement to date. You can see the website and social media engagement have been a huge component of this. Phase one and phase two efforts, which focused on meeting people where they're at, at community events, town halls, also yielded significant responses.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanor?
Brian, I hope it's okay that I'm interrupting your presentation. What do you attribute the increase of more people participating in phase two? Typically, you start with a large number, and then people kind of fall off, so how were you able to engage more people in phase two than you engaged in phase one?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanor, that's a good question. I think perhaps two things. I think one of, it's a little misleading because we've added social media here, it's kind of one thing by itself. Some of those go in phase one and phase two as well, so I don't know what that exact breakdown is. However, with phase two, we did a lot of events, and we also had a telephone town hall, which scored some pretty significant numbers towards the end of that process as well. So, kudos to Casey in the mayor's office for, Robert Simpson, for that. So, with that, I'll pass around draft copies of the My Meridian Vision Document. This is, in essence, a summary of public involvement to date. The meat of this are five value themes: premier, evolving, livable, connected, and vibrant. Each of these themes has several vision statements with it. These hopefully look familiar as you participated in the online surveys. Many of you, we saw these events where we had large poster boards and dots, this is what that was. They were also, these statements were in the packet memo we gave you. Most of the statements were crafted from phase one input and have subsequently been revised based on both additional public outreach and steering committee review. I won't go through all these one by one, but I will call some changes to attention as we move through them. Premier Community is the first theme. These statements are largely the same as phase two work. Again, those poster boards and the dots, these were in the surveys as well. Evolving Community is the second theme. I would like just to take a moment to point out the last one here. This one is likely new to you, as it was something that many of the comments this summer indicated was missing. This replaces a statement focused on business incentives, which had very low public prioritization at these events and on the surveys. Livable Community was the third theme. Again, these should look familiar. We'll just take a minute to plug Parks and Recreation Department. Most of these scored the highest. The Connect Pathways there was the highest ranked statement we had for any of the themes. Connected Community was the fourth theme. You should, again, be familiar, but all of these have morphed a little bit, so none were replaced here, but they all had quite a bit of tweaks. I'd like to note the third one especially. At the steering committee, this was one that they really wanted to embrace as something that we need to own and something that we need to be aware of, both because we are the central, a lot of traffic moves through us, a lot of growth moves through us, and it's also a benefit. So, as we move forward, looking for both strengths and opportunities related to central and key in the valley. Lastly, a vibrant community was the fifth theme. I'd like to note the last one in this case. This replaced the item about diversity of housing and opportunities for life cycle transitions. That idea was captured in a premier theme statement already, so we're not losing that. And our historic character was something, again, mentioned frequently in the feedback we heard during phase two. Next steps, these are the statements, these statements that we have here are a launch pad for ongoing and upcoming market land use and transportation work. We'll take these opportunities identified by the public, by the steering committee and staff, and then find ways to mesh those with these statements. We'll then take this back to the public, revise both the statements and the opportunities if necessary, possibly several times, and ultimately come to city council with a plan for tax policies and a new map. We're hoping to try and wrap this up tail in the summer next year. Lastly, and as I mentioned, we've had significant public involvement throughout this phase, throughout these phases. Phase one already has a document on the website that encapsulates all of the phase one activity, including verbatim comments. Phase two will have something similar in the very near future, so if you're interested in those comments, they will all be included in there and all available on the website. To wrap this up, I'm hoping to receive your blessing in sorts for this public involvement, for the steering committee work and work to be reflected in this document. I don't really have a specific ask or request of you, we're just hoping for, you know, general, we like what we see so far.
Thank you, Brian. It's been quite the process, and I have loved how much interest you've gotten from the community. Definitely have people talking about it, and that's great. Council, any questions or comments for Brian?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanor?
You asked for a question, or you asked for some feedback, so I'm happy to give it. I think the work that you and your colleagues have done around this issue has been phenomenal. And, Brian, I know that we see polished, finished documents like this, the updates that you send us are polished and look great, and I recognize there's a significant amount of work and time that goes into that. I think that we have really done a phenomenal job of engaging our public around this issue, which is, I know, for me, when we started to head down this path, it was something that was really, really important to me. So, if you're looking for the feedback about keep doing what you're doing, yes, please keep doing what you guys as a team are doing. And secondly, just because we don't get you here before us very often, I just want to say... to say thanks. I think that you are a stellar employee in the city of Meridian, who really work overtime to make us on the council look really, really great. And we really get the opportunity to thank staff when they're here, especially those that aren't here that often. And so, I just wanted to say thank you for all you do for the city and for the council and for all the departments. It's noticed, and it's very, very appreciated.
Thank you.
Other comments? I like how you further refined the comments from the first visioning part. I love the changes. It really shows that you're listening to our citizens' feedback and tracking that. So, look forward to seeing the phase three as you move forward with the what's next steps. Those will start to really pin down a lot of the overarching themes and make them something that we can really put actionable items to. So, that's great. Anything specific, counsel? If you don't have anything tonight, I know you like to process it, please look at this and get feedback to Brian, and I'm sure he'd appreciate your follow-up. Thank you, Brian, this looks great, this is a great piece.
Madam Mayor, if I may, here's the website, by the way. I do have kind of one final note, it was sort of a request by several members of our steering committee, and it's something that we have heard from the public. The city has allocated a tremendous amount of resources to this, not only in the budget, but staff time. It is very important, I've heard you guys tell us it's very important, and I really appreciate that. However, not everyone else is hearing that. We have several steering committee members that have, again, kind of raised concerns and questions to us. Attendance at the steering committee has kind of waned, we aren't seeing as many people return on a regular basis. And a few of them have said that they don't know that their opinion is going to matter, again, this is both steering committee and the public, or that once we're all done, the plan will be adhered to. No plan is perfect, obviously change is going to occur, that's natural, but anything city council can do to convene you to convey your support and commitment to both the process and the plan would really be appreciated. You guys, I've heard that, and I know you guys mean that, but not everyone else is hearing that. So, if there's a way we can share that better, I would take suggestions or anything you guys can offer.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanagh.
Perhaps this is an offline conversation. I know that my vision for this whole thing is that it's always been citizen-led, but staff-managed, and council trying to keep, you know, our nose out of it as much as possible. And perhaps that has been received, that we don't value participants' opinions. So, if council is amenable, perhaps there's an opportunity, maybe over each series of meetings, where a council member can at least stop in, meet those that are participating on the committee. I'd be happy to go to the first one as soon as I know where it is, where I can relay that. You often are the conduit, where you hear from us, you relay to them, you hear from them, relay to us. And I'm supportive of, if council members are available and able to, that we can just pop in and at least thank them, and really reinforce, at least from my perspective, that their opinion is incredibly valuable and welcomed.
We appreciate that. Mr. Burnt is the liaison, or the representative on there. Mr. Palmer had been, and Mr. Burnt has given his surety that he would be in attendance and make sure to represent the council on that.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
That is the truth.
Truth.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanagh.
Appreciate that. I guess, still to that point, if, unless there is an objection, I'd love all of us to have the opportunity, we don't have to stay and participate...
Sure.
...in keeping council members' nose out of it, but at least an opportunity for some personal interaction, I don't think is counterproductive to the work that they're doing.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Kavanagh, I wouldn't disagree at all.
Send me a date, I'd be happy to be there. Did you say? Oh, I think you said I would disagree. I'm like, this is going to get good.
Okay, anything further from counsel? You could... Okay, anything under item 11? Lieutenant Coliani, I would ask that, I know that the opening of O'Wahi High School will not be for a couple of years, but I hope our Transportation Commission can start tackling some of the roadways around that area. I know both our police and fire have indicated concerns of the speed limits in that area and some other safety concerns. So, if conversations can begin to happen at the Transportation Commission level, that would be great, and that you would bring some of those conversations back to this council, so they can hear what might be proposed in moving forward.
I will pass your comments on to them.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, there are a couple of upcoming events. Unplugged Town Hall is tomorrow at 6:30 at Lakeview Clubhouse. We have been getting a number of questions, again, our citizens set the agenda. Trunk or Treat is on Thursday, starting at 6 o'clock. Expect lots of people, and we have over 100 trunks to greet all of the kids that are dressed up. MADC has their prescription drug take-back on Saturday from 10 to 2 at Blue Cross, and we do have a Veterans Day Parade, it is in Boise, but it is important, we'd love to see a great crowd out there supporting our veterans. That is Saturday, November 3rd, from 10 to 12. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session per item 12.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I would so move that we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74-206 1D and 1F.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?